We'll have an invocation by Pastor Jerry Storrs. And then Supervisor McClure, will you lead us in the pledge? Please stand for those who want to participate.
Let us pray. Eternal God, Creator and Ruler of all, we ask, Lord, that your peace reign over the room today as our, as the men you have set in positions of authority over us, including Mike, Jeffrey, and Stephen, Jeff, and Rich, that guided by your Spirit, they may be high in purpose, wise in counsel, firm in good resolution, and unwavering in duty, that under them our Pinell County may be governed quietly and peaceably through Jesus Christ, our Lord, who lives and reigns with you and the Holy Spirit, one God, now and forever. Amen.
Amen. Please do you mean the pledge? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, gentlemen. I'll call this Pinell County Board of Supervisors meeting for February 5th to order. I want to welcome everybody. I first would like to talk just a little bit about how these proceedings are to go. I think everybody received this paper on their chair. It has the, is it not working? Okay. The volume up. Did every, has everyone seen this paper that's been left on chairs? It's kind of the, it's the House rules, code of conduct. And then on the other side is call to the public, guidelines for call to the public. I think item number six on the call to the public is important. Last week, we were kind of criticized because we didn't respond to call to the public, but we are not allowed to. It's against the law. It's, it's in statute that we do not. So I want everybody to understand that. We're not, it's not that we're ignoring you, it's just how we have to, the rules of the game. I think I was somewhat criticized about trying to call this meeting to order last week, but it was to try and keep an orderly fashion of dialogue for everyone. So your cooperation will be deeply approved or appreciated. So we will ask for your cooperation. So the, for today, I'm going to kind of lay out how we're going to proceed today with the agenda. Agenda item number one is to cancel the code revisions as written. It will come back in a future agenda at some point. But I'm going to allow public comment on item number one. But the comment should be directed to whether it's a good idea to cancel it or not to cancel it. If you have a long list of items that you have your concerns, we want you to give those to us, but not in this forum. There will be other forums and there'll be other opportunities and other meetings where that can be done. And it is my, my intention to work with my supervisors, my colleagues, and establish a new sequence, order of how we will proceed with the document going forward. But today is, and I probably should have used a different word than cancel, maybe suspend, or maybe to pause it. But I do want to let everybody know, it will come back in some form at some point, but not until we have input from as many people that want to participate on the input. So I want that to be perfectly clear. So for the public comment on item number one, I would like it to be no more than two minutes. So I've asked the clerk to set it at two minutes. Shouldn't take you more than two minutes to tell you whether you think it's a good idea or a bad idea. And so we want to keep this movie, this meeting moving along. We have a lot of business to take care of, other than item number one, but we do want to, we do want to give you the opportunity. Maybe you ask a question that we can't answer, because now that it's agendized, we do have an opportunity to be able to respond at some level. So with, and there will be a second, thank you. There will be a second call to the public. I can't stop you from talking about item number one, but hopefully the second call to the public could be on other topics that you may want to proceed with, so, or just put forth to the board. But on the second call to the public, there will be no dialogue from the Board of Supervisors. Just, just so you understand, that would be item number six on the call to the public on the paper that you have there. So, everybody good with that? Everybody kind of understand where we're going today? Okay, I see a few nods, yes, so that's, that's, that's good. I see some positive reaction.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can, can we speak first? Because remember, we're still frustrated because we couldn't even speak. Can we comment on it right now as well?
I will allow that. I, one of the things I was hoping that we kind of hear from the folks, and there may be other questions we can answer, but Supervisor Surti, if you'd like to make some statement right now, I'm happy with that.
We can dispel a lot of what was going on as well.
Sure.
And that we got criticized for bringing this forward, which we knew it was happening, but if we knew everything that was happening on these agendas beforehand, then we don't even need to have these meetings. Because of open meeting law, we have to meet. Because I can't talk to these guys during the week. I can speak to one without breaking the, the rules. And so, yeah, we don't, we, it's not like you have to pass it before you know what was in it, but we would have came up with the same results. We were, we were equally as outraged, but we couldn't speak about it. And on the, regarding the animals and the keeping of animals and animal husbandry, Supervisor Goodman and I have actually been working, before this even came to light, to making it more animal friendly. A lot of the folks that wanted to, to keep what they have, you don't realize, you don't have it that good right now. I'm coming from the, being a councilman and mayor of Apache Junction, Mountain View Road in the Apache Junction side, you can have way more animals with better roles than you can on the Mountain View side. And so what we are trying to establish is to sort of copy and paste the Apache Junction rules, which are very animal friendly, including you can even have roosters if you have more than an acre and a quarter, and unlimited horses within reasons. So we want to actually make that happen. We don't want to make it less. So we're going to be working on that. This is the kind of thing we can slowly do at our leisure to make everything better. And I, I think you're going to be very pleased with it, so that's what I wanted to get out there.
Okay, sure. Could you have them shut that door, and then they can take care of the discussion outside? Can we shut the door?
Yeah, that was very distracting.
It distracts. You want one of us to go talk to him? No?
Does anyone have a problem? This whole room said, yes, we have a problem. We would like to answer.
Thank you, Natasha. Do any other supervisors want to make a statement or a comment at this time? I'm going to wait, I'm going to wait till we hear from the public.
I would just say quickly, you know, and I've been criticized for that, you know, this is the process. It was put out, and the process was that people had put input in. We didn't expect quite the angry process return, but we got it. And, you know, this was just an attempt to update the 2012 codes and to align it and bring some alignment to the state statutes that have come up. And at some point, I think the mission got off, you know, got off track. And, and that's some on us and some on others, but, you know, I'm going to ask that the plan, and I also hear that people say, well, our meetings are during the day, and people can't come to those meetings. So I'm going to ask staff to bring in closed-circuit TV into the hearing room to record it like we do these meetings, and then have a summary and a recap, so that if someone wants to go look at a particular item, they can look it up, and it'll be, it'll have like a table of contents, you can see that item right there, and you can look right at it and see what's been going on, and be able to make comments to us or to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
I guess what I'd like to ask the question is, during the discussion that we have item number one, well, in that discussion, I'm assuming that we're going to be able to help give some direction of where we go from point A to where we need to go? Yeah, no, I expect us to, to give direction to staff, absolutely. Okay. Okay. And I'll say, I, I received the draft copy the afternoon before the meeting. I had not looked at it, and, and in full disclosure, I'd been given a rough draft sometime back in, in mid-January, but I was not under the impression that we were putting it out to the public at that time. So you can blame that on me, whatever, I wasn't aware of it. Now that it's been exposed, and we all are looking at it, we can, hopefully we can get this thing going in the right direction for everyone in the future. So at this time, I'll, I have a, a lot of cards. If you can do it in less than two minutes, two minutes will be the max, but just really try to focus on whether or not we should cancel the draft document at this point in time. So first, I'll ask Morris Menega to come up.
He's in the other room.
Is he in the other room? Okay. There he is. Your name and generally where you live?
My name is Morris Menega. I live at 56 North Agrofree Lane in Casco, Arizona. I am a, I've been for 30 years. I'm a Pinell County resident. I'm also a businessman. We own small conglomerate of businesses in Pinell County. Our primary business has been the development and construction business for about 40 years. I'm also the chairman of the Pinell County Planning and Zoning Commission. So I feel a little responsibility here, but if, it's going to take me a little longer, two minutes, and I hope you grant me that, because, I don't know, myself, I've spent hundreds and hundreds of hours, as the rest of us have. So, so coming from the private side, I do, I've been before the Planning and Zoning Commission here, other cities, taken our projects through. And, you know, the last thing that this Planning and Zoning Commission wanted to do was overregulate. That was never our intentions, never our intention with the animals or anything else. You know, when I came on this Planning and Zoning Commission about 10 years ago, it was a little bit of a train wreck, but we really have now probably the best planning and zoning commission this county's ever had. We have a great cross-section of business people and successful people that don't want to overregulate, you know? So with that said, we, we spent, what, a year, a year and a half on this? That's a huge document. And granted, if we missed a couple of things, we'll go fix them. That's what the 90-day period is for, basically. You know, as people, I just heard people say, don't do that. Well, state code, we have to. When we started this, I said to staff, why are we going through this? Well, we have to, because it's per the state codes, all right? And, and some of the stuff we tried to deregulate, staff said, we can't do that. All right, we moved on, you know? You know, the other thing, there's been so many new issues come up, microschools, a lot of other issues. So last thing I want to say, it was never, ever, ever our intention to further regulate any of this stuff. It was simply an update for a existing planning and zoning laws that needed a lot of updates. So I just want everybody to know, that was not our intent.
Okay, thank you.
You know, there's, Steve, there's a couple of other people here from the commission that would like to address that.
Okay, well, if they filled out a card, they'll get called up. Thank you. Come on, try to keep it concise. Okay. Next is John Mott, M-O-T-T. Name, if I butchered it, and general location where you live?
I, John Mott, I'm the president of Country Farms Irrigation and Management Company, community at Ironwood and Ocatillo, three and a half acre properties. I'm going to scrap what I had planned because of the time limit, but I just, first, I'm going to speak, first of all, I'm neutral, I don't care, first of all, I don't want any rules, but I understand there have to be some. So I'm kind of neutral on what these are or aren't. There are a lot of things in there that I find silly, like my zoning can only have, it can be as narrow as 100 feet, but I have to have, if I want to have poultry kept, I have to have a thing in there that's 80 feet from a property line. So there's a lot of stuff that I kind of, and I appreciate, I know how hard it is, the guy that just spoke, I know how hard it is to try to do anything with a large group of people, but, so I appreciate all they're doing, but we really need to like look at a lot of those, those types of things. I want to speak from the aspect of, I've been the victim of the weaponization of the code. First of all, I still firmly believe that the Board of Supervisors has no right to regulate what I'm being in charge of, according to state statutes, as you mentioned. But I'm also not that worried about it. I, I get it, I understand we got to live together, and I appreciate Supervisor Goodman working, getting everyone together on the same page, helping us get through that. And we're in the process of working on, on becoming into compliance with, with county, county rules. But my concern is I'm, the, whatever we do, the, we've got to do something to stop the weaponization of it. For example, in the notes on my case, because it's in a lawsuit now too, we have this, the people that turned me in said that if they could get proof that I'm in violation of a county ordinance, they could proceed with kicking me off the board. They are specifically looking for ways, and they've turned lots of people in, in our subdivision. One of the ladies that's involved isn't even in, she's in Maricopa County, not Pinell County. That's my concern, is the weaponization of this code.
David Long. Let's keep it to the item at hand on the agenda. Think it's a good idea or a bad idea to cancel it? Can you explain why? David Long. They can do it in two minutes. Go ahead, I'm sorry, David.
Live at 28134 North Crystal Lane in Santan Valley. I'm the director of the Santan Valley Veterans Center. Good morning. In 2020, a group of veterans identified a severe lack of veteran resources in Southeast Valley and decided to create this center. From the information sheet that's being provided, it shows we have continued to increase the number of veterans assisted in this val, in the valley. In addition to veterans assisted, we have also increased our support groups in attendance, and that is veterans and all their individuals in the community. Our Veterans Center success isn't limited to just veterans. By supporting those who served, we in turn assist the veterans' family, friends, neighbors, and community. Our support programs, activities have assisted individuals seeking help, personal and work connections, drug and alcohol recovery, youth and adult leisure activities. One veteran in particular had a wish of leaving his property to a veteran cause in order to help veterans. The Veterans Center is proud to say we have honored his wishes and are working towards making his dream realized. Our request to Pinell County, please govern us with simplified general laws. Please allow our organization and other landowners within the county to enjoy the privileges of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. The privilege to enjoy freedom of life without constricting laws. The liberty to live, conduct business, or activities within basic respectable governing laws. And the freedom to pursue happiness and repay kindness to our veterans and individuals in our community. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Wade Williams. And then on deck will be Jack Reed.
Thank you for your time. I, I live, I'm Wade Williams. I live in Four Acres in Country Mini Farms, southwest of Ironwood and Ocatillo. I enjoy quiet residential ranch-style living in that neighborhood with animals included. I support a current pause on, on the regulation at this time, mostly because I want to make sure that it is going to take care of everything that we need to take care of. We are having some infighting in our community. I've had a friend want to buy in the neighborhood, but has heard about our neighborhood and does not want to, because of the fighting that is going on. I don't support commercial right next door to me. I don't support that, I don't want that. And some of the zoning that is going on would allow for some of that to occur. I'd like, I think that zoning has a purpose of keeping like uses in like areas, residential here, commercial there, and not having them mix and mingle in between. I support that concept. In our neighborhood, we have things such as AMP Nursery that has come in, for example, that's very much commercial. And if it starts there, it can come into me, and so I, I struggle with some of that. And I don't like the weaponization of, of the county. A short little story, Arizona football player in Maricopa County had a wife that was staying home, and he was off playing football. She was nervous, left her lights on on the outside of her home, they were shining into the neighbor's house. That neighbor called the county, the county came out, and there was a dozen violations. And so with a dozen violations, I was brought in as an engineer to help resolve those issues. There were significant issues that had to happen. Structures that were too close to the property, lights that were too high, tens of thousands of dollars in modifications. Now, this football player has deep pockets, and now the neighbor's house that complained his residence was too close to the property, and they were pushing to have that cut off so that, that that could be conformed. The point is, every one of us has issues. I'm sure we all do. We don't want the county to come and be the police and be weaponized, so each one of us has a dozen things we have to change, which hardly even changed the neighborhood anyway. I ask that you help maintain the residential use and fill of our neighborhood, help keep it a nice place to live without the arguments going on, and I am happy to participate in committee, whatever is needed, to help support, maintain these rules, and develop more if you need. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's Jack Reed. On deck will be Penny, is it Gadmire? Okay, go ahead, Jack.
I'm Jack Reed. I live 39176 North Prince Avenue, Country Mini Farms. I've been past Board President and Waterways Chairman for this community for the last seven years. In October 23, I got a call from a longtime resident, Mr. Gard, I mean, he's owned the property in, in the 80s, and it was way before the 2012 code revisions. He was about ready to do harm to himself when I got the call. So I came over, I saw the court papers, the Superior Court was about to file a lien on his property and make him, and come in and clean it up. So I, with the help of Sam Goodman, we got in touch with the county attorney and the code compliance officer, we did a walkthrough. And Jim signed a diversion agreement that gave us 90 days, and after the code compliance and the county attorney saw it, they gave us another 90 days. So we had 180 days. And in that meantime, I had numbers, numbers of residents, 20 at a time, 15 at a time, and eventually, American Legion came in and helped us mop up. We completed this task, and it took nine months, but this guy had his whole life savings in his backyard in semi-trucks, containers, and van trucks. We cleaned all of that off. And his, he, he called it his 501K, or 401K. He probably said 501. Anyway, there was 10 violations, and we, we did the best we could, and upon the, the last walkthrough, the lady pointed out some other things, but it wasn't on the list. And I think that the, the code compliance moving forward needs to entertain that there's some people been here since the 70s, even before. We have one neighbor, he's 80 years old, he got turned in for a kennel license. He has five, five border collies. Thank you.
Thank you. Penny, and it looks like, gee, what is it?
Gothier.
Gothier, okay.
I too am from the Country Mini Farms on Ironwood and Ocatillo. My name is Penny Gothier. I've been a resident for 25 years. The same comments come from me as from my neighborhood, as I was involved in the cleanup also, which took nine months, and almost every weekend, and multiple times during the week that we labored, our whole entire neighborhood came together to help clean, clean his place up so that it wouldn't get taken. And I guess already the codes are where we have people in our neighborhood, and there are a few of them that are in our neighborhood that are weaponizing it. And therefore, I don't understand why, for one, it's not where you can see who reported. And if they report, they should be subject to their own investigation of their own property, and they should be in compliance if they're asking for everyone else to be in compliance. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman Miller, Board members, thank you for your time. I ask you to disapprove the current draft in its entirety. As someone mentioned, it should go in a dumpster and be burnt. It is just a boondoggle. There, there's so many things wrong with it, it's beyond count. But that doesn't relieve us from the current problem, the current code isn't very good either. You know that, we know that, we all know this. So folks, we do need new code, but if we're going to do new code, we need a good place to start new code from. I'm familiar with a lot of the county codes. Apache County is one of the best rural county codes I've ever seen. It is simple, it is fair, it protects the property owner's rights. That combined with their agriculture use exemption is a great place to start. Couple examples, if you want to build a barn, you want to build the stables, I'm putting in something ag. Okay. Two-page form, fill it out, give it to Building Safety, goes to County Recorder's Office. Guess what? Go build. There are no permits, there are no inspections. Please build your stables. Just general zoning. Let's say you want animals, that's great, we don't count. They're your animals, we don't count your animals. You want to have a Conex, okay, keep it out of the setbacks. You have an RV you want as a dwelling or secondary home, okay, great. You can have that, provided it's on permitted septic. The code is simple, it is straightforward. It takes the knives out of the people that want to be weed Nazis and stab their neighbors. And the other thing I'd say is, I don't know who Apache used for consultants, but if they did use them, those people understand rural counties beautifully. I would use them. I would not use a developer's friend. Baker International probably does great stuff, but it's not suitable stuff for us here. I would use that as the beginning point for where we kick this off next, as we do need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer, no, no.
Someone is standing up.
Is it your name?
Jennifer Hillsboss.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer.
So, good morning, Board members, Chairman Miller. My name is Jennifer Hillsboss. I am living in Supervisor Goodman's district currently. I am also the Chair of the Pinell County Democratic Party. But most importantly, I rise today as a member of Santan Valley. I live in unincorporated Pinell County, and I was appalled at how drastically these proposed changes would change the personality of rural Pinell County. I encourage this body to disregard them in whole, and I second the gentleman, I was going to say the same thing. Apache County has wonderful codes that are clearly written by people who understand the personality of rural counties. That is a great jumping point for us. We all know that Pinell County is very quickly changing, and that needs to be taken into account, as well as the, you know, rural, rural personality, the identity that we have here in the county. In my capacity as a chairwoman, I have an opportunity to speak with voters of all parties and political ideations. And when I was in Gold Canyon yesterday for three hours during open office hours, I had a number of people that I spoke to, and their concerns were, this does not feel like a good use of our money. How much did we spend getting this draft put together? And why were the supervisors not more informed of what was in the draft prior to it coming out? Now Supervisor Miller, I appreciate your comments earlier today, and as a president of a company of my own, I understand you can't always know what's in everything, but But I think at least the summary of what was available should have been read prior to that. With that, I thank you all and yield back my time.
Thank you. Julie, is it Thialman? T, it looks like T-H-A-L-M-A-N? Is she in the other room? She's not speaking? Okay. Shiti Massey? M, uh, M-A-S-S-E-Y? Last name? Is she in the other room? Is she? Okay. And then Tina Dugan, you'll be on deck.
Good morning, Chairman Supervisors. My name is Sherry Massey. I live in rural Maricopa, 16280 North Ralston Road. I did not plan to comment today. I thank you for that opportunity, so I'm not as prepared. I will say to the point, the draft zoning document is a behemoth of a document. That, um, it took, I'm about three quarters of the way through reading the entire document. So I'm glad to say that I would like to see it scrapped in its entirety. Rewritten, everyone that's spoken before had fantastic points. I am wondering about, I always love going back to the Pinal County Strategic Plan 3.1, 2.1. Encourage the protection, preservation and maintenance of existing rural land uses and its character. That's so important. And, um, I think moving forward with this document, I would like to see the statutes referred to by the planning person that spoke first, I'm sorry, I don't know his name, um, up on the website so that the public can review that, educate themselves, be interactive. The one good thing that has happened is it's amazing, the large group of rural Pinal County that has come together massive. So that, that's great. And that, um, maybe there's work sessions involving private citizens too. Again, thank you for your time. Oh, my red light is not on. That's amazing. So, um, I just think that Arizona State Farm Bureau is working to establish better guidelines and what? I'm shut off, I'm good. Thank you again.
Thank you, Sherry. Uh, Tina? There you are.
Trying to save some time here.
Okay.
Hello, I'm Tina Dugan, I'm a farmer's wife from Stanfield, Arizona. I probably do a couple more things besides that. But anyways, I am in favor of scrapping the proposal and starting anew. I'd like to emphasize the need for clearer direction in your next proposal and the need for robust community involvement in any changes that are published. You were elected by the people. Most of our residents have never had the opportunity to appear before this board. And when they do speak, they often express themselves with raw emotion. These constituents may not always be the most eloquent, but their concerns are genuine and deeply felt. It's disheartening to witness any dismissal or ridicule of these voices. Elected officials should honor every person's input, recognizing that their lives and livelihoods are directly impacted by the decisions that you make. I respectfully request that as we begin anew, you set a strong and inclusive framework by incorporating a structured process for community engagement. This will ensure that every resident, no matter how they express their concerns, has a seat at this table. A well-crafted zoning code must be rooted in common sense and reflective of our diverse realities. I respectfully request that you incorporate these measures into your next phase of this zoning code revision. By inviting input before publishing any proposals, you can prevent oversights that lead to such frustration and mistrust and will ultimately craft a code that truly represents Pinal County's needs. Thank you again for your commitment to revisiting this issue and your willingness to engage with all voices in our community. I hope that moving forward, you will remember that every person matters and respectful empathetic communication is essential when representing and addressing those people who have elected you. Thank you.
Gillian Owen? In the other room, maybe? Oh, there you go. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Gillian Owens and I'm from Queen Creek, Arizona. Members of the board, Mr. Chairman, thank you for having me today. I would like to speak in favor of canceling the proposal for Pinal County. It is important to share with you how important keeping livestock on our land is important for my family. Doing school from home allowed me to have the flexibility to build out animal projects. It also allowed me to collaborate with other kids like me. As a member of 4H, I am raising Jersey milk cows, breeding exhibition chickens, and I operate a nest-run egg business. I am confident that tending to these animals has made me a better person. It is very fulfilling to work. I am learning about business and saving money for my schooling costs. We are focused on good genetics and working with veterinarians so that I can have excellence in stewardship for my animals. I also love my pony Luna and riding with my mom. It would be heartbreaking if I could never or no longer raise stock on our property or if we had to leave and live somewhere else. I feel like this is God's will for me to grow up this way and raise our own food. Please consider the opportunity that kids like me should have while making decisions about how to develop these lands. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Eller Owen? Hey, no, 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 please, please.
Thank you for having me. Members of the board, Mr. Chairman, thank you for having us. And I am in favor of not moving forward with this proposal. So many families that can, that are impacted, it seems to me you're confronted with people who really care about the way they live. Um, I want to know how, how it got so far away from common sense on this issue. Today, the existing regulations are concerning. It seems someone knows, um, what is important to our needs as a community. Predatory developers can swiftly bury targets with nonsense violations. Neighbors turn on neighbors pulling the code enforcement card over petty disagreements. The idea, um, that utilization exemption can be automatically built in as landowners' rights could be very attractive. Exemption from building permits, interference inspections, unincorporated. It is not the place for Canada to interfere with the way that we raise our family or tend to our stock. As a child, my family was violated by restricted use. We complied. We pulled our cattle off of grazing lands, we sold our cattle and our farm. I would not have the guts to be here today if it was not for my parents helping me understand, um, why we were leaving the beautiful place that our grandfather homesteaded. Please choose your authority to see that this development project in all areas serves to empower and protect the landowners and the children of Pinal County first. Thank you.
Robin?
Ellen Owens from Queen Creek, Arizona.
Oh, thank you. Robin, it's, looks like Dee Davidson? Oh, there you go. Okay.
I guess it's a formality, but I am Robin Davidson, I live on Warren Road in Hidden Valley. I didn't plan to speak, so I'm speaking from my heart. And I don't know if I can do any better than anybody else here because they all have huge concerns. Whatever Tina Dugan said, I wholeheartedly agree. Whatever Stephen Kohat said, I agree. I am against this going forward, so I hope that you decide, decide to actually throw it in the trash and start over. We need a better foundation though. This code was flawed from the beginning, we need to start someplace else and build on it. Something simpler, that's not so complicated for everybody to understand. Having the citizens involved is much better than a third-party consultant. No matter how good of a relationship the county has with Michael Baker International, I think that the citizens, the people who reside in the rural areas have every bit of a right to say is how their community is zoned as they go forward. Now, there's some bad seeds, there's some bad apples in some of the rural areas that have trash for lots. And I believe that these, uh, trash days, the, the cleanup days that we have can go a long ways. So I'd like to thank you for that. But I think we need to start with something better. Let's start with a base code and build on it the way the residents want and not somebody who doesn't live in the area who's drafted this code. So thanks guys for listening to this. I hope it's awakened everybody up. Thank you.
Thank you. Yvonne, uh, H-O, H-O-L-T-U-O-G-T? Anybody with a first name Yvonne? Want to check the other room? Here she comes, thank you. Here she is. Name and generally where you live?
Um, it's Yvonne Holt, and I, I live at 238 South St. Augustine, I live in Casa Grande. It affects so many people on this issue and I agree, throw it in the trash. I would, I would say that the Apache Junction point system is good, it's at least start there. And, but these regulations, these different things is just not going to work. I board a horse. I love where I board. I will not leave from there. It, I get, it's not some huge farm like 20, 30 acres, but I get better care for my horse. And I, I will not stand for, you know, this stuff. I mean, this, this is just crazy. You know, I, 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 I like being able to tell you what I think, but it's really not enough. You know? And there is going to be more and more people in this Pinal County that has horses, livestock of everything. And, uh, to be, you know, I feel like we don't even own our land, you know? So, I just, I, I, I do not want this to go through and if, if we have to have some regulations, but, you know, I just, it has to be done right. Thank you.
Thank you. Kaylin Winkelman? Kaylin? In the other room, maybe? Kaylin? Are you Kaylin? Name and generally where you live?
Yes, hi, my name is Kaylin Winkelman. I live, um, in McCartney and Cox area in Casa Grande by the college. Uh, I wanted to speak, um, one is the CEO of One Happy Horse and, um, I also run Saddleup Arizona. I wasn't affected quite by some of these proposed, proposals because I have a larger property. But I saw the negative impact it had with many of my friends, people I associate with and what, whatnot. I think that, um, something simple that allows flexibility, like Apache Junction's point system or something, will allow people to be able to pursue their passions, their, their business endeavors or whatever, in the direction that works best for them. So I do think it needs to be trashed, um, dissolved completely and started fresh, just like a lot of people have said. Because I think there was very, um, crazy regulations on, you know, um, birds aviary, you know, flocks and whatnot. Because if you're trying to do a hatchery or whatever, you have to think about fertility, all that stuff. But overall, um, I do think we need something to have some sort of structure, but obviously just done a level differently. So, um, I'm in favor of getting rid of it and starting fresh.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Peru? What is it? Parino? Paraino, Richard? He's in the other room. Here he comes. Oh, Richard. Name and generally where you live?
Good morning. My name is Richard Parainu. I'm a United States citizen located at 83222 East Legacy Lane in Warco, Arizona. First, I want to address the new micro school category in the ordinance, which applies to home-based education. My wife and I homeschool our nine children and under this change, we could be required to obtain a special use permit just to educate them. This is unnecessary burden on individual homeschooling families. I urge the board to add an exemption for single-family homeschools. To support this request, I have provided a letter from my legal defense attorney for your consideration. Second, I'd like to tell a quick story. Last year, I was accused of having illegal structures and homes on my property. I went through the entire administrative process, following every step required of me. When I asked the civil hearing officer why the county doesn't have to follow its own ordinances and state law, his response was shameful. He told me to ask a judge. He then found me guilty and found, and fined me. I pleaded with every board in this county to honor the law, but instead of upholding it, you rely on attorneys to strong-arm the people. Your response? You said you would learn only when a court steps in to give you guidance. So I took my case to the superior court. The judge ruled that general agricultural purpose are exempt from your building codes. That should have been the end. But instead of admitting your mistake, you've chosen to change these zoning ordinance. Not to correct your error, but to rewrite the rules. You've proposed striking the word "not" from the ordinance, changing it to say the county shall restrict and regulate us instead of shall not. This is the exact opposite of state law. In our constitution, we are guaranteed due process. In the statutory exemption case, the state explicitly provides us land uses and you cannot regulate or restrict it. You cannot restrict our rights with a simple change of wording. Yet that's exactly what you're trying to do. It isn't about fairness, justice or law, it's about control. We don't want your smart cities filled with censors and attorneys and drugs flying over our land. We want leaders of character.
Thank you.
I've got three sentences. For months, I've provided input on this issue. I've even obtained court orders that showed you have, that should have taught you the law. Yet instead of respecting the state law, you are bending it to fit your own agenda. You have forgotten that people fought and died for our freedoms that we enjoy today. We will stand, we will fight and we will defend our freedom.
Thank you. No, no.
This is for the clerk, these are the court orders so that people may look them up and use them to get some.
David Milton? Molton? Molton? Is it Molton? See in the other room? Okay. On deck will be, um, Michael McAllister on deck. Name and generally where you live?
Good morning, gentlemen, my name is David Molton. I live at 32716 North Felix Road in Santan Valley, Arizona. I am the founder of the Pinal County Chamber of Commerce, which you should put up on the county website. I also own a business called Search Engine Professionals that I run from my home. And I own pimpingchicks.com, which I need to get home because I have about 300 chicks coming out of the incubator today. I am a big no on this, uh, this whole thing. Uh, there's some other things here I want to talk about though. I have here with me code enforcement, five violations that were against me in my house. And I didn't go to court like the last gentleman. I went to visit your neighborhoods and I'm going to do it again. I went to the code enforcement this morning, this was a $2,700 fine you guys fined me for. And today it's gone. I went over code enforcement and it's gone. Because I guess I fought you guys, I didn't go to court, I just went to your neighborhoods. It's gone, I want to know what happened to it. You arrested another gentleman in Pinal County for not cleaning up his property and put him in jail. You guys have this ordinance, 05620-CCO, that says if I don't pay that $2,700, you can put a warrant out for my arrest and, and come and get me. You never did that, why not? This ordinance, it is a spit in the face to our constitutional rights, it creates debtor's prison. And I want to see this ordinance off the books because if you find somebody, put a lien on the property. Don't, don't, don't threaten to arrest them. I've been under, under this threat and fear for the last four or five years since this is, this has been out on me. Why is it gone? Right? Why is my $2,700 code gone? You've just opened up a legal precedent for anybody here who gets a code enforcement violation to come after you and mention my case and say, why is his fine gone and not mine? This is like, this ordinance, because you didn't arrest me, you have violated, violated your constitutional oath of office.
Thank you.
I still got a couple seconds. I want people to know that you're pumping our sewer water back into our aquifers. So your home builders can have more, more, uh, houses per acre. I don't want to drink your shit water. Thank you.
Michael McAllister? On deck is, uh, Roseanne Service.
Michael McAllister, 4695 East Shadow Lane, Santan Valley. Uh, thank you for listening to me. First thing I want to say is I am a rural landowner, taxpayer and citizen of Pinal County as well as a business owner and animal keeper. I professionally work with actual snakes and even my snakes were impressed with how snake-like these zoning regulations were. I have video and news clips of you guys saying that this shouldn't have happened and that you have rural landowners' interests. Well, I don't think you do. And if you did, then it's time for, to take accountability for your actions. How do you take accountability, admit to the mistakes, um, as well as, uh, get rid of these zoning changes? There are plenty of state laws under animals. I know because I'm a part of a board of coalitions that actually does everything with state, um, animal regulations. If you guys can't If you guys can't take accountability, then I ask that you be replaced with people who can and who have rural landowners' interest in place and not the interest of developers. The only guarantee in life is death, and I think you all are planning the death of rural landowners in the near future. I do not feel representative, and I know you all say you want to represent us, but I fear these zoning regulations will just be brought up year after year until you reach your endgame, which is what was proposed already. You're going to do a little bit more sneakily. You'll probably add these into different bills or public work projects that are not on people's radar. It's routine by many politicians, and they have done this, and you are following the same exact routine. So, get out of the rut, hold yourselves accountable, and actually represent the fine people of Pinal County and all the rural landowners out here. And please, cut ties with these random developers who, their only interest is money. Thank you.
Roseanne Service? On deck is Bernice, is it Camas? On deck, one, 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 one second. Bernice? Is it Camas? She might be in the other room. Go ahead.
My name is Roseanne Service. I live at 4580 East Rolling Ridge off of Combs and Schneff, and I'm here representing over 46 Pinal County households, which is about roughly 200 people. Just to voice our concerns, to ensure that rural communities are properly represented. I'm here today to first, thank you for considering trashing this. I know some, some of you have already said that very clearly, that you will be throwing out this current revision of the law. I believe Supervisor Cerdi, you actually know my father, Darryl Colvin, but I appreciate how quickly you addressed the issue on social media, and you rightly pointed out that many people were unknowingly violating laws that need revision. And I think that's the case here. I want to clarify that while you had, did, you did explain that the, that really your, the purpose of that was for the animals, that you really felt like those restrictions were a major concern, I just want to make sure that it's clarified that while the proposed animal restrictions were a major concern, last week's stand taken by mainly rural area landowners was about much more than just animals, and I trust that you understand the bigger picture here. Moving forward, I would like to, to just remind us all that we need fewer restrictions on responsible acreage lots. We already have animal cruelty laws. We already have small business regulations. We do need, we do not need excessive zoning restrictions hindering rural landowners. And the gentleman who spoke earlier today, he was talking about how he was trying to help with the, with the issue of riding, but it sounds like that staff may have hindered him. Whatever is going on with staff, where they're getting ahead of you and what your will is, you really should look at that, because that's not okay. And we definitely do not need laws that are being weaponized against our citizens so that we can encourage tattletaling. Thank you.
Thank you. Bernice? Okay. On deck is Robert Klob. K-L-O-B. Robert? Go ahead, Bernice.
Morning. My name is Bernice Gomez. I live at 6340 South Sunspur Place, and I'm here today to speak on behalf of my family, hard-working ranchers, farmers, and especially the ones that couldn't make it today, the families who rely on their land, not just as a property, but as their livelihood. The proposed zoning changes are outrageous and unacceptable. When we bought our properties, we did so with purpose. We chose those because it allowed us the freedom to farm, raise livestock, and sustain our families. Now, with the stroke of a pen, you want to strip away our rights and impose restrictions that no rancher, no farmer, no 4-H members, which I am a 4-H member, not hard-working landowner will ever agree to. Make it permanent, toes those changes away. Our farms are not just land. They are our foundation of our families and our future. Many of us grow our own food, support local markets, and contribute to the community. These changes would hurt our way of life, our culture, and our ability to provide. We demand respect and fairness. You cannot make decisions without the voices of directly affected, like us. You cannot for us to change when we have worked so hard to be, respect was asked at the beginning of the session. Where is the respect to all of us now? We urge you to reject the zoning changes and stand with us, the people who make our families and this land thrive. Let us keep what we have rightfully chosen, bought. We have, we ask for nothing more than to be left in peace to farm, raise, and live as we always have. I appreciate the concern, but we're fine. We don't need you to think for us. Thank you.
On deck is Richie Kennedy.
Mr. Chairman, I would request an extra minute. I'm the vice chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'm speaking, in an effort to save time, I'm speaking on behalf of several other members, commission members. May I, may I ask for three minutes, please?
I really don't want to allow that, because we're trying to keep this concise.
I'm, I'm speaking to very specific points, and I've been intimately involved in this, in this case from, in this process from day one.
I'll give you one more minute, but
Thank you.
Not one second over that. That red light hits, you're walking off.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, vice chair and supervisors, my name is Robert Klob, and I come before you today in three capacities. First is a concerned citizen of Pinal County. Second is a respected design professional and local business owner. And third is vice chair of the Pinal County Planning and Zoning District, Commission for District One. It's an honor to serve on this commission, which, which have, has been described by many as one of the most diverse in years. With over 40 years in architecture, I have worked extensively with zoning codes across nearly every jurisdiction in the state, and have contributed to code updates in Phoenix, Chandler, Queen Creek, and Maricopa. I have spent my career understanding how zoning regulations impact homeowners, businesses, and long-term success for our communities. I've stood on both sides of this podium, advocating for fair and effective zoning policies, and I confidently say very few people in this room have as much hands-on experience with building and land use regulations as I do. Our staff and commission have been working on this update for years, with significant progress made in the past year. I personally invested more than 150 hours to ensure this document is comprehensive and well-considered. However, it is important to emphasize, this is not a final document. It was never intended to be. It is a work in progress, designed to evolve with public input. That is precisely why we have the 90-day review period, so that concerns can be addressed, feedback can be incorporated, and the best possible outcome can be achieved. Unfortunately, the constructive intent of this process has been overshadowed by misinformation, speculation, and fear-mongering on social media. Conjecture conspiracies, outright falsehoods have spread rapidly, leading to unnecessary panic and hostility. A small but vocal minority has taken it upon themselves to speak for the entire county, using intimidation tactics to derail years of hard work. This is not how sound policy is created. Let me be clear, throwing out this update and restarting from scratch would be a disservice to the people of this county. It would invalidate thousands of hours of dedicated work by staff. It would waste taxpayer dollars and set a dangerous precedent that rewards obstruction and discourages the very planning and structure our county needs. Moreover, due to existing laws and regulations, we would inevitably end up back in the same place with a nearly identical document years from now, but at a significantly higher cost. Pinal County is growing, and we need a zoning framework that is clear, fair, and adaptable now. The existing regulations are outdated, inconsistent, and difficult to enforce. This update modernizes and streamlines the code while maintaining flexibility for future adjustments. It's a framework that allows our staff to hold both residents and developers accountable while ensuring the growth is managed responsibly. Furthermore, we must recognize the value of our planning staff. They are among the best in the state, and their expertise is vital to the future of this county. If their work is disregarded due to misinformation and bullying tactics, we risk losing them to other jurisdictions, leaving our county at a severe disadvantage. So, I ask you, were you elected to represent all of Pinal County or just those that make the most noise? The right path forward is not to abandon this effort, but to continue refining it with constructive feedback. We have the opportunity to create a zoning code that serves the best interests of everyone in this county for years to come. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And then on deck is, it looks like Bill Valet? Is that correct? Go ahead, Richie.
Chairman Miller and Board of Supervisors, thank you for the time. Richie Kennedy. Stand here currently for Pinal County Farm Bureau, currently serving as president. So, not a small voice, a large voice in the county, not only speaking for our ag members, but as well as our, oh, gosh, I think I lost my term, but basically, all the members are involved in Pinal County Farm Bureau. We stand asking for approval of the dismissal of the zoning ordinance. Basically, two, two items. One, we would ask for involvement from the community. I think you're hearing that, seeing that now, that that is very much what is needed. I appreciate the gentleman's comments prior to me in the sense that staff has probably done a lot on this, and as much as staff does, citizens need to be heard. Second, I'm going to switch hats. As your chairman of the Board of Appeals and Adjustments, I understand the need an update for our zoning, but it needs to be fair for our citizens, as well as staff and those that have to uphold that law. I'm also going to add suggestion that we would look for a firm that isn't so heavily influenced from the East Coast, that we would find somebody that would understand and respect rural Southwest values. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill? Is there Bill? It looks like V-A-X-E-L-T? Somebody in the other room? Here he comes. Sorry if I butchered your name, but your name and generally where you live?
It's not me.
Oh, it's not you? Okay, I'm sorry. I'll set it aside for a second. Mary Ann Tohey? Mary Ann? How about Lori Fuller? She's here? Any one of them three? It's a Georgia A-R-R-E-D-A-N? Arden? Arden?
Gordon.
Oh, Gordon? Okay. Oh, George Arredondo. I'm sorry, George.
It's all right. Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Name and generally where you live?
George Arredondo, Coolidge, 1601 West Wilson Avenue. I'm born, raised here in Pinal County and had the opportunity to travel the world for some extent, and 49 states, and three tours in combat. And the way this is written as it is would put a lot of people in non-compliance, or you would make them become criminals. So, I would strongly encourage you to vote against the current process on this planning and zoning. Yes, there's some needs, as has been said, that the things have to be improved and worked on, but it's going to be getting us involved in some community rural areas. I, there'd be a lot of folks that would be hard-pressed to even come near to comply with what the existing format. I don't know about this Apache Junction, I mean, Apache County's regulations, but if it's true what is being said, that's probably a good start. There is a lot that we need to learn from this process, and I know many of you are from big cities, but remind yourselves that you're here to represent the unincorporated parts of the county. There's a lot of land, there's a lot of people out there, so I would you keep that in mind. One last thing, I took a law class, and I always remind myself, our freedoms are taken away when we put things into print. So, when you put these things in print, I value our personal freedoms, our individual freedoms, our freedoms to enjoy our open space there. So, when you write these regulations, these codes, don't forget about the individual freedoms that you're taking away when you impose those upon us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. William Speichert? Speichert? Oh. Oh, I'm sorry. Lori, you'll, you'll be next, okay? It's okay. Go ahead.
Morning. My name's William Speichert. I live in Cactus Forest. I'm against this. My wife and I moved to the rural area to get away from government regulations. We're happy with being left alone. I build cars and have a few on my property. I restore them as a hobby. It doesn't bother my neighbors. Why should it bother you guys? People bought their piece of paradise and should be able to do what they please with it. If it bothers some folks, they have all the right in the world to move to an HOA and live under the rule of others. I, for one, purchased my land, my home, developed my shop, built my property to suit my needs, and I don't feel the government has any right in saying what I do with it. Maybe I should run for officer. I'll fight for the people of Pinal County till my last breath. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Lori Fuller? Go ahead. Name and generally where you live?
Good morning, supervisors. Lori Fuller, Thunderbird Farms. I have three pages written out and timed and everything, but after hearing Planning and Zoning Commissioner Klob speak, I would like to, to have a chance to offer some feedback from a citizen about watching this process happen. First of all, I am absolutely for scrapping it and starting again. I feel it's out of touch with what people are asking. I feel that 3,900 voices yelling in unison that rural people, our rights are being trampled, need to be heard, and I think a bigger question should be asked. Why? Why did that, why did this one document set off so many voices in the county? And I respect you guys. I respect planning and zoning. This is a huge county. And I've got another question for you. When you are legislating things that affect us, why are we not consulted? I have spoken many times in front of Planning and Zoning and Board of Supervisors. I have sent numerous letters and emails begging to be consulted. When you guys legislate what's happening in Thunderbird Farms, Hidden Valley, our area, and we are not offered an opportunity to answer questions when we're speaking in front of you, or offer our insights, it's where we live. We know what happens where we live. Why are we not consulted? So, I encourage you to scrap this, and I encourage you to reach out to your citizens and taxpayers and ask them what makes sense for them, what works for them, that they won't be yelling on a Facebook page at you for not being listened to. Supervisor Miller, I really appreciate what you said about having to update the code because of complaints, but I think the answer is simplicity. Take it back to nothing. Make it simple. The less rules that you put on us, the less neighbors complaining to you, and the less complaints you have to put up with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Ann, I'm going, it looks like T-O-O-H-E-Y? She's gone? She left? Okay, thank you. Bill? And Tony? Emmy N?
Mendoza.
Mendoza? Tony, thank you very much. Now, it's you.
Last minute here. Now, it, now it is me. Tony Mendoza.
Name and generally where you live?
In Santan Ranches. I own a real estate brokerage in the valley, and I do a lot of work out here. And unfortunately, unlike the gentleman from Planning and Zoning, damage has already been done. It isn't something that is unwarranted, or all of these views and these people coming out. Just with the mentioning of this online and the, the movement that, as you can see, everybody's really passionate about, we have seen a lot of people turning away from purchasing in this area in the last week. So, there has been significant damages, and I, and I know that these are proposals, but they do have real, real-world effects, and, and this affects the bottom line of our residents. So, moving forward, as you said, this would definitely happen at some point in time. Would you guys agree to be, be transparent in your, your guidelines on what you give to the individuals that are going to draft our next version? So, it's great that we're all upset. We just don't want to come back here and do it again, and if we're aware And if we're aware of what you tell these people that they should be focusing on, maybe we won't end up here. But right now, you guys need to say, yeah, we'll let you be aware of what we're asking them. And not just some of the stuff, but a lot of the stuff, because it will have an effect. And nobody's going to look at you as if it's your problem or that you are on behalf of developers or special interest. If we know what you're asking them, you know, that'll help us keep from having an overwhelming number of speakers in the meetings. Is that something you guys can do?
We'll be discussing it after the public comment.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Lisa? On behalf of Lisa Kennedy?
Yes. Good morning.
If you could give us your name, though. I mean, we do need you.
Sophia Colias.
Okay.
Yes, I was asked to read this on behalf of Lisa Kennedy, who wasn't able to be present today.
Okay. I'll.
She is in favor of canceling the draft. As you know, Michael Baker International, with its satellite office in Phoenix and headquarters in Pennsylvania, was engaged by Pinell County to write the codes that govern our local regulations. In light of this, we would like to request a detailed explanation regarding the following points. Scope of work. Could you please clarify how they were approached to write the codes and by who? What specific objectives and guidelines were provided by Pinell County during this process? Research conducted. We would appreciate details on the research performed to inform the code development. What methodologies were used? What specific areas were studied? And who was involved in this research process? Understanding the basis for your conclusions is crucial for our community. Financial backing. We would like to understand who is financially backing this initiative. Could you provide details on the funding sources and any stakeholders involved in this project? Payment and bids. How much was Michael Baker International compensated for this engagement? Additionally, how many bids were received for this project and what criteria were used to select your organization? Benefits. Additionally, we are interested in understanding how this organization stands to benefit from this engagement. What are the anticipated outcomes for Michael Baker and its stakeholders in relation to the codes developed for Pinell County? Furthermore, how do you envision this engagement benefiting Pinell County itself? What positive impacts or improvements do you foresee for our community as a result of these codes? Lastly, what insights can you provide regarding any financial benefits that may accrue to Pinell County Board of Supervisors as a result of this initiative? Thank you.
Thank you. Last card, unless Bill has shown back up, but Jennifer Brenner? 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 Name and generally where you live.
My name is Jennifer Brenner and I live on Tennesse Lane Port Pot of Gold Trail, Arizona Farms, west of Cooper, or east of Cooper. I would like to let you guys know that I am in favor of scrapping this and a couple different reasons. I'm just a homeowner. Bought a house, had four horse stalls on it because my kid wanted to ride horses. I live there. All my money's in this house. That's where I get to stay. Don't get to buy another one, don't have the money to. But when I'm reading this and I want to have some chickens, my property lot lines put a chicken hen house, you know, in the middle because of the setbacks that you want, right smack dab in the middle of my property. So the other thing that I read is that, and correct me if I'm wrong, just an average day citizen, but as I understand, the state law says maybe two horses for an acre or an acre and a half, you can have one more or something like that. And that's the state law. And maybe, my question is, is that maybe those state regulations, when we, let me just back up. The first gentleman that spoke, he said he was on the zoning and he said he had to start somewhere. He said he had to start somewhere and you had to come up with something based on what the state regulations were. My question to you guys as supervisors is that maybe the state law that we're following or we're following in this path isn't the best for this community. And that's my challenge to you guys. Maybe we need to do better in Pinell County to set the standard because all the rules and regulations for the state of Arizona might not be that great for their people. And I'm asking you if you would go ahead and take a look at that. Think about our community and even though this hierarchy of the state might have some regulations, you should know your people the best and can tell the state that this is what our community needs. So I ask you to just, I implore you to do that. I implore you to do better. Thank you.
Okay. That's all the cards we have. Go ahead and allow one. Is it on item number one? Okay, then we'll have another call to the public. Okay. After the consent agenda. Okay, so that's item one. Couple of things, I do, I think we need to do a better job of communicating to the public. I may look at counselor on some of these state regulations. We cannot, we cannot be lax. We can't be, we can't circumvent the state regulations, as I understand it. There's a term that's in the document many times and it says legal nonconforming. I think an explanation of that going forward at some point might be beneficial to everybody in the room. So gentlemen, I'll go ahead and start. Supervisor, do you have any more to add?
Yeah, so this was not quite like a regular call to the public, so I'm going to address some things, even though I wasn't called out because we're discussing. One thing disturbing about, are we just going to answer to mob rule? Well, this is a republic, not a democracy, so it's our job to look after every piece of the public. So yes, there's 500,000 people, 495,000 people don't get to tell the other 5,000 people what to say. So yes, we are going to represent the people that have their rural lifestyles. And no, there are no state laws regarding horses, so I know that's an easy error, but yeah, we can make it better than wherever. So, so yeah, I say scrap it all for now. If there's any good in it, bring it forward. Let's look at not only Apache Junction, but apparently Apache County also has some good rules and let's make it better than before. A lot of the folks that spoke last week didn't realize they were violating. Anybody that said they had four horses on an acre and a quarter, you're violating. You shouldn't be. You shouldn't be able to have four horses and watch the neighbors' horses and have goats and sheep, et cetera. So, so yeah, we want to make this better than ever and we'll take our time. I think we're going to form some panels and get the right folks on here and I think we're going to be pleased with what we come up with. Another thing that got scrapped temporarily was the whole dark sky thing just got thrown aside. We want all that back in there. There was a lot of work on that and everybody's basically for that. So we want to make sure that gets into the, into these codes as well.
Rich?
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for taking the time to come out and speak your mind. I agree, we're going to make some changes to this and the people will be heard, I will promise you that. I am new, the newest supervisor here. There's a lot of people who don't know that District One has a new supervisor and I want to make sure that District One knows where they can go instead of just calling whichever supervisor. So please, if you have a pen and paper or if you want to come see me afterwards, I just want to make sure that you know my phone number, which is 520-866-3960. Please call my office. If you don't know where it is, it's in the city of Maricopa, but if I need to come out to a different part of my district, I'm more than happy to. Also, an email address, which I'm, again, more than happy to have you know, which is B O S District One, the number one, at pinell.gov. You're welcome. Five days a week, I'm more than happy to meet with anybody. Please come to my office, call, make an appointment, and I will promise District One and anybody who else cares to come from other districts, but I think that's best to stick with your own supervisor. But I'm always willing to listen to everybody and anybody from out the whole county, so please take advantage of that. You have my phone number. If you don't have it, if you didn't write it down, I have business cards here that I'll be more than happy to give you and I'll be happy to listen to what you have to say. Thank you very much.
Mr. McLaure?
Supervisor McLaure? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, we always say we want public input. We got it. So, and you know, and honestly, yeah, I'm for doing what we've been talking about, but you know, we should have vetted this way before it got this far. And in my district, I'll, we're going to be calling for quarterly meetings with our Planning and Zoning Commissioners. We each appoint two and I have to say that, you know, we're out of touch and we've gotten off track. So I'm going to be having quarterly meetings just with them and looking for more public input, as has been suggested certainly, but we need the public input. We'll be doing small road shows. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Supervisor Goodman?
Well.
Not granting you your 20 minutes.
Yeah, it's too bad, baby, because I need to take as much time as necessary, just like you're actually in control and you can have me booted, whatever, and I'm good with that. Stephen and I are really good friends and we've grown a relationship over the last eight years that we stink a lot alike when it comes to the service that we provide. His model has always been, what is it that you've always said? We're not here to regulate, we're here to facilitate. And that's always been his model and I've internalized that myself from what you've said. The misinformation and the misunderstanding, the question on the internet, the, you know, probably the fastest way to get information out to anybody is the truth machine, social media. Then you have the media itself that reads it and all of a sudden they think they've got a great story and then they go out and they interview people. I got caught into that trap because the news media went out to my district and interviewed several of the individuals that are from your situation and have created an uproar in our communities because of the process here. The nontransparency that so many of you felt violated, your livelihoods. We had a gentleman that was arrested last week because he came to speak and all he could see was his ability to keep his bees and provide for his family was being ripped from him. And that's what social media did, is it communicated that message to him. When they came to me and Channel 12 and Channel 3, Channel 3 interviewed me first and she asked me a lot of questions. Where did it start? Where is it at now? And where's it going? And I remember giving the same questions that I gave to Channel 12. Remember, my staff told me after she saw the interview on Channel 3, Mike, she made you look like an ass. I do bad enough just to do that on my own, let alone have it cut up like it is. Personal experience that I'd like to share, that I think equates to this very problem and issue that we're dealing with. After my wife passed away in 1991, I remarried, not too long afterwards, and we had three children, two of whom are mine from a previous marriage and she had one. I come from a farming operations. Mrs. Dugan, I think you'll understand and appreciate this story that I'm about to tell. I was doing the insurance business. I'd got out of the dairy business and we were living up in northern Arizona and I got a phone call from a rancher and he asked me if I could help him breed artificially inseminate, AI, in the cattle business, it's called AI, but artificially inseminate 88 of his heifers. I thought this would be a great opportunity to take my two boys with me, my stepson and my eight-year-old boy. The stepson is nine, was nine years old at the time. As they helped crowd those cows into the shooting, into the chute, the squeeze, we call, so that I could do the procedure, and if any of you aren't familiar with artificial insemination, I'm going to give you a brief description of what that entails and I may offend some of you. But it involves a plastic glove that you put on your arm because of a place where you got to go on the anatomy of the cow to be able to properly insert a straw that has semen in it. And so I'm doing this procedure and I'm going for, and I've got 88 head of cattle that I got to do for this guy. And as I'm doing this, my sons are working the cows up and all of a sudden, after about 10 or 15 of them, my little eight-year-old boy looks at me and with this bewilderment on his face, what the heck are you doing, Dad? What the heck are you doing? I never even thought about what probably, as I said what I said, I didn't think about what that little eight-year-old boy was going, the impression that he was going to walk away with, and you'll understand here in a second, thinking that he's got his stepmother who's seven months pregnant. And my immediate response back to him was, I said, I'm getting these cows pregnant. And I just kept on working. So you could imagine after five hours of working these animals and running them through the chute, you could imagine what our discussion was like going home. It was very quiet. And then all of a sudden, my one son leans forward from the backseat of the truck, he leans forward and he says, Dad, I'm never getting married. You know, there's some humor in that, but there's a lot of things that needs to be learned from that. I tried to take that and patch that over and correct that so that he could understand better what the facts of life are all about. I slaughtered it terribly. My, I don't even remember my own dad, my brother's here, I don't remember my own dad or mom taking the time to teach me about the facts of life, other than they would took us out to the farm and show us how the cows and the bulls did it. And that was the way I learned. But the point I'm getting at is that this whole process was never, never, never the intent of what we were trying to accomplish here. We've literally put our arms and we've made ourselves look like asses. And the bottom line is, is that like my little eight-year-old boy, I've got to spend time, the five of us got to spend time to help straighten out this mess. I have, I've taken notes by all kinds of people that have come in here, but let me tell you where I believe we absolutely failed right from the very beginning. I had an impression when I first started to press this to go down the path, and that was five years ago, because Stephen and I talked about this. And I had the impression that I need to stay engaged, no matter what kind of bureaucracy was coming from the one side, I needed to stay engaged and make sure. And whenever I tried to, I was pushed back. You're not ready for you yet. We're not ready for you. You heard one of the gentlemen from the Planning and Zoning Committee that came up and talked about that. Part of that is we've got individuals that work in government that are trying to adhere to government and trying to do the best they can based on what they understand things are in the process to go. And sometimes we miss the mark and that is, gentlemen talked about the Constitution of the United States, we the people, in order to form a more perfect union. We've lost track of that. No matter what side of the aisle you sit at, it's disheartening. And then on top of that, we don't even get a chance to respond in certain situations. The people that came last week came again this week and repeated the same problems and issues that they were going through and the frustration. And I remember not being able to respond and even talk about how we got to this area and even take ownership for it into the public. They thought we were unfeeling, the way we had to sit here and listen to all of this. You're probably going to give me that 20 minutes. I'm almost done. I'm almost done. Because the bottom line is, as I'm taking notes and I'm looking at this situation, I think there's a direction that we can go clearly. And first of all, the one reporter that reported, I actually looked at this, both of them, I talked about this manual and it's the complexity of this manual and everything else, there's a way to fix this. But the reality is, one of those reporters asked me, where are you going to, what are you going to do? And I took it and I threw it in the trash can. He aired that on Channel 12. But he asked, what if there's some good stuff inside of this? And I said, doesn't matter. If there's good material in there, it doesn't matter. The stigma's already been given to. The stigma's already been given to it." And we've heard that right here today. So that I would propose, as moving forward, Mr. Chair, is that we actually, what Supervisor McClure mentioned, and so has Supervisor Sertie and Supervisor Bietiello, that we actually go to you. We provide focus groups. And to his point, Supervisor Sertie's, we are a republic, and we have multiple people that we have to deal with and multiple issues. It's crazy. And me, a country pumpkin, being thrown into a situation to where I need to work with the rural people has been very, I mean, the urban people has been very difficult and tough. Somebody mentioned Michael Baker &amp; Associates. I think they've done a good job for the urban areas. And I think when we go forward with this, we need to do that. So what I'm proposing, as a decision on this, we scrap it, number one. Moving forward, we set up focus groups, each of us in our districts by zone. We have our rural people. We have our, we have our zone, our urban people. Our urban people have parking problems in their neighborhoods and so on and so forth. But I, what I'm suggesting is that each of us set up along with our staff, and this time our staff comes with taking notes, writing down what your input is, and then taking that information, comparing it to what the law's ability, what we can and can't do within the parameters of the state laws. Once we do that process, we come back to you, the citizens, and if there's a compromise that can be made, we make that compromise. If it's not only no, but hell no, we can't live with that, then we, as somebody said legislation, we go to legislation and we lobby to change the law if it's not usable. We have an opportunity here. You've all come out in droves, and we have an opportunity to actually unite in a former fashion. I know. Well, I know we got a lot to do. Well, we got a lot of hell and shit that we got to deal with here and get calmed down, and I'm one of them. No, please, it's not my opportunity to take a grandstand, but I think it's my opportunity as a supervisor in public, because what happened last time? 25 of you spoke, and then a guy gets up and he speaks to something you don't even like, and it cleared the room. And that was so frustrating. That's the part where I talk about. It doesn't matter what side of the aisle you're at. You've engaged yourself now, and I'm asking you to engage. We've got a gentleman that's leaving right now. I'm asking you to stay engaged to make this better than what it is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Couple of things. I know there was some specific questions about cost and probably the financing of this whole project. We can't answer that today just off the top of our head. We will try and extract that information from budget to make that public and, and so everybody can, can hear that. I think those are valid questions, too. I hope that staff has, understands direction where we want to go from here. Sounds like some small groups and really kind of just get down in the weeds and build it back up from, from the bottom. So the question is, do we want to cancel the item, the document dated January 6th of the revision of the zoning codes?
Mr. Chair?
So do I, do I have a motion?
Yeah, but could I, could there be something added to that? For instance, we currently have zoning violations that we're dealing with. Can we put that on pause?
Well, I think, well, I don't know about that. I don't know that we can do that. I don't think we can. There's cases that are pending. Yeah, but the one thing I would ask of everybody that's interested in this topic is they probably ought to look at the current code, and you may discover that you might be in violation, you might not be, I don't know. But I think that's going to be the baseline, is the code that's, that we're living by right now. As far as cases under, underway, I, I looked at the councilor and I don't think we can suspend anything like that at this point in time. However, we will address them when we, when there's opportunity, when they're brought before the Board of Supervisors. So do I have a motion?
You do.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move that we disapprove or cancel the Pinal County zoning ordinance update drafted, or draft dated January 6, 2025.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Ayes have it. It is canceled at this point in time. So thank you, everyone, for your time that you gave to us this morning. Brings us to item number two on the agenda. Do we want to take just a second and let everybody clear?
How about a five-minute break?
On a five-minute break, a recess for five minutes. Hey, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you. In the back, can you take a seat? Yeah. Why are you doing this to me?
You guys always.
Where's Rich? We lost Rich.
Bietiello.
Bietiello. Where? You're District, no, no, you're District Four. District Four. Don't, don't go by this up here, this. Okay, okay. All right, well, we're trying to get this meeting back. Calling it to order. Okay. Okay. We're back in order. Brings us to item number two, County Managers' Report, Information Only. Mr. Lou.
Thank you, Chairman. Just wanted to mention and thank everybody who attended the 150th Anniversary Celebration, February 1st, this past Saturday. I think there was about 200 people. It was a great time, great music, great exhibits, great speeches honoring our past and present. And want to thank a few of the staff members that worked on organizing the event and making it such a memorable day. Georgina, Taylor, Victoria, Lisette, and Kevin in Communications and Marketing, Ms. Kennedy, our Clerk of the Board, and Tanya in my office. So thank you to all of them. What a great way to celebrate and honor our county and its growth over the past 150 years. We have a video, I think, that has some snippets from that event.
Welcome to Pinal County's 150th. Thank you for all being here. Supervisor McClure, you ready to read the proclamation?
Whereas Pinal County, Arizona, established on February 1, 1875, has grown from its humble beginnings into a vibrant community, rich in history, culture, and diversity, recognizing extraordinary contributions of all who have shaped Pinal County over the past 150 years. Proclaimed this 29th day, January 2025, by the Pinal County Board of Supervisors.
Our history is vibrant and visible, as with the 1891 courthouse behind me. I was invited to help celebrate Pinal County's sesquicentennial and the history behind it. The first Pinal County Sheriff, Mike Rogers, whose job it was to collect taxes from which his salary was to come, decided a portion was not enough and absconded with all the tax money in 1876.
I see some of other longtime residents and families that have been here that helped settle and make this area vibrant and prosperous.
I've been married for 29 years, and today is actually my anniversary with my wife, Joanne, over there. I am blessed for 29 years, and Pinal County being 150 years, and I have the same anniversary. So I will never forget either one of them.
It reads, "The 50th anniversary of the creation of Pinal County marks a significant milestone in the history of our great state."
I came to Pinal County 50 years ago for opportunity. I've been fortunate enough to own a business, raise a family, three kids, beautiful wife. Join us for the dedication of the Pinal County 150th Anniversary Time Capsule. We have two cars out here, the Lucidair and a 1924 Model T Ford. That car has not been built. This is a barn find. It is so original, and there's not many you'll ever see in that condition and that shape and that authentic.
Thank you for coming and listening. Let's celebrate Pinal County.
That was great. Thank you. Thank you to everyone that helped put that together. That was, was a fun celebration. Brings us to item number three, Supervisors, regarding notable current events in your districts. Does anybody have anything they want to bring forth?
I just want to say that the Gold Canyon Dump situ, event went well. 322 vehicles came and they filled six containers. So all that stuff was out there in the community. There might have been, I want to apologize, there might have been some communication problems on, somebody had loaded up and got there as they were closing and they were gone. So we will look into that. But overall, it was a great success, and it shows how it's going to be happening in all of your districts. So I think that's a great, great way that we can do it. And we did it all internally, too. The first time we did it, we had help from one of the trash companies, but kudos to staff for doing it all internally.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Let's see, Friday, this Friday, from 7:00 to 12:00 in Salmon Well, there is a, a dump, for lack of a better word, but, but a Batteries, Oil, Paint, Antifreeze, and Much More Event, Helen Erickson in Salmon Well. It's for the Oracle, Salmon Well, and Mammoth populations. So if you have some toxic stuff you want to get rid of, please show up. I do want to thank those that came to, and I forgot to mention it last week, thank those that came to the State of the County address that we gave down in Saddle Brook on the 7th, the 27th of last month. Thanks to all the county staff that showed up and to the people from the community that showed up. It is available on the Board of Supervisors website in District 4. If you want to watch a two-hour show, you're welcome to. Thank you.
You know, I said plenty at the beginning. You made that very clear, so I'm good.
Rich?
Thank you, Chairman. Just a few updates in my district. So on the 30th, the City of Maricopa opened up their registration for youth soccer. So please get out there and make sure that you do register. I was able to attend Lucid's Drive. I got to drive a Lucid, beat it up. It was nice to beat up somebody else's car opposed to beating up my own. Also, again, great job by staff for the 150th anniversary. Food was great, cake was great. And as I mentioned in the video, I have my 29th anniversary on the same date as the county. So I'm going to be actually, my wife is surprising me with a trip starting tomorrow. So where am I going? I have no clue. Also, Maricopa Historical Event at the Province Community, they had their event and it was awesome. Great food, great people there talking about the, the city of Maricopa. And then on 24, the Maricopa City Council Meeting. Then some up and coming things. In the county building that I am in, in the city of Maricopa, we have a community room that is available. You can contact my office, and if you'd like to have a meeting between 8:00 and 5, 9:00 and 5, sorry, 9:00 and 5:00 in the morning to 5:00 at night, you're more than welcome to call our, call my staff member, Barry, and he'll be more than happy to arrange an appointment for somebody who needs to have a, a meeting with about up to 20, 25 people. Also, Chamber of Commerce, they had their annual award ceremony, and it was great to attend and see all the businesses in the city. There was about, about 100 people there, so it's great to have community input and also. So 347facts.com, for those who live in the city of Maricopa, this is a website you can go to, and you could leave your suggestions on how do we fix the 347. Don't be shy. Unfortunately, we all get them, and I'm sure they're all mad at me for getting all those emails. But it's important for my constituents in Maricopa to know that we are working hard, and we've mentioned it every second of every day, that we possibly get an opportunity. So also, we have something very interesting that's going to be bringing, being brought up, Sky Village Dino Park. They are going to have a meeting about having a dinosaur park in the city of Maricopa. Now, it's just in the very beginnings. They wanted to meet with me, and they'll be meeting with me in two weeks about this whole park. Also, the Be Awesome, Be Awesome is a, a youth group that they meet every week or every two weeks to discuss things for the youth. It's very important, and being from New York, I might have said youths, sorry. But it's very important to understand that, you know, we always hear about the seniors, the seniors, the seniors. We have about 12,000 seniors in the city of Maricopa, but we probably have 20-plus thousand kids in our, in Maricopa, and we need to make sure that they're also heard and they get to speak their mind and know what they need for their future. Then also, in March, March 28th and 29th, there will be a cleanup in Maricopa. It's actually out in the Hidden Valley Thunderbird Farms. Forgive me for not knowing the exact address because I'm just finding out about it. So it's, yeah, it's probably in the county yard off of 347. Then also, on February 15th, Hidden Valley Thunderbird Farms has a fire district. They do a fundraiser. It is absolutely a great event, great stake. It is $25. There's also some raffles and other stuff. Please check it out. And again, I'll be doing some of the posts on that. So again, February 15th at, I believe I have the time here, forgive me because it was just sent to me. It's at 4:00 at the Thunderbird Fire Station, which is on Ralston Road. Thank you very much, and thank you all for attending.
Thank you. Just briefly, I have a couple of things I'll just mention. Along with February 1st, the 150th for the county, Randolph celebrated their 100th birthday at Randolph with a kind of a dinner on Friday night and a lot of going on on Saturday. I heard it was a great success. They're very proud of their, their new, their subdivision has really gotten a nice facelift, and they've really taken ownership and pride of that. And I'm very happy for those folks in Randolph. And for those that knew what it looked like two and a half years ago, go look at it today. And then the only thing I think I have in, in the Casa Grande area, March 1st, it will be a steak fry where Supervisor Steve Miller will cook 200 steaks. So if you're interested in supporting the Casa Grande Museum, just get ahold of me and I can get you some tickets. But anyway, that's what I got.
How many?
200. So, anyway, that's all I have for my area. Pardon me? Yeah, okay. Brings us to item number four, Discussion and Update Regarding the 2025 Federal Legislative Session. Here comes my assistant. So, and, and thank you, Dana, for helping us put this thing together. There's so much going on at the legislature. This might be a better format for, to report through this method. So, thank you.
Wonderful. Good morning, Chairman Miller, members of the board, Dana Lewis, your county recorder. Also, the third vice chair for ACO, our Arizona Association of Counties, the unit that we utilize to communicate changes in legislation and works as our lobbyist. So we'll be presenting items today that we are supporting as a county as a whole. Today is the 23rd day of the session. Today is the 23rd day of the session. As of the update of this slide, we had of 1,468 bills have been introduced. Again, 733 of those from the Senate, 735 on the House, and 103 either House or Senate. Again, 733 of those from the Senate, 735 on the House and 103 either House or Senate concurrent resolutions. When we are talking about these items, we're taking it on from certain perspectives. From the ACO standpoint, as either myself sitting as third vice chair, looking from a financial standpoint when we're utilizing a lobby firm, as a board of director member, which means that we're thinking about all of the constituents in Penal County and voters, or from an association standpoint, sitting on the Arizona Recorders Association, Mr. Miller sitting on the County Supervisors Association, Sheriff Tople with the sheriffs, we take those into consideration when we're making a stand on any type of bill. We always go with a majority standpoint. So we have 15 counties in the state of Arizona. If we don't get to a place of majority, that is reported by ACO to the legislator, the legislature, most likely it will always have one of these statements behind it, either that we are in full support of the bill, we are opposed, maybe support with an amendment to the language or oppose as written, and then of course, there is a neutral. Here, key dates to know, the bill introduction deadline was the 3rd. Introductions for the House is the 10th. Last day to hear House bills in committee, the 21st, and then going forward through March and April, but we'll update these again next month. Mr. Miller?
Okay, thank you Dana. So I've been, I've been working on the water stuff primarily and it's kind of interesting. There's 94 water bills that have already gone to the state legislature. I don't know, maybe, maybe a dozen will get in hearing, we don't really know. I don't spend a lot of time until I see them in committee and then we start whittling them down where they're at. But water is a large topic up there this session, so we'll, we'll just have to kind of see where it goes. The Agda Urban Senate Bill just got put out, so I see we've got that one on there. For those of you that, the water technology will be a session law, we'll have to monitor that and see how much support it gets, but I think that'll, that will get through pretty easy. But there's another bill that just got on, it's 1616, it's Senate Bill 1616. For those of you that know what PICWA is, the Penal County Water Augmentation Authority, which I represent the county's situation, position there, there's, we've never been able to do bonding, even though our, our title says authority, it kind of gives the impression that we have bonding authority, but when you read the statutes, we did not. So together with some bond counsel, there is some changes in some legislation that will give bonding authority to PICWA in the future and is hoped that we establish that and that is going to be to go out and secure more water from hopefully like the Bartlett Dam or Arquahala or those kinds of areas to bring into Penal County. So it's, I'll give you more detail. That legislation just got dropped yesterday and is in the hopper, so excited about that. That's what I have on water right now. You have a question?
Yeah, just a, yeah, question of you.
Okay.
Being that you've been the one that's kind of ramrodded and taken a big initiative in this, has given direction from the board itself. Because this has become so intense and so, all hands should be on deck, would you take the initiative and just kind of help send, because we've got the open meeting violations if we, if we, more than two of us attend some of these water meetings and stuff like that, but to kind of help emphasize more of the importance to us, I think more of us involved would be helpful.
I don't know if any of you or all of you are registered with the state to weigh in on bills, you know, to support or not support. Help me with the acronym.
RTS, Request to Speak.
RTS, yeah, Request to Speak. That is a very effective tool for legislators. They do, when they're, when they're in committee and they're looking at those bills, they want to see who's supporting it and who's not supporting it. It is an effective tool. We will try and figure out a mechanism to get that message out to you to weigh in. And I think that's, that's probably the most effective short-term way. And then sometimes it does take some coming in and testifying to the, to the state legislators. If there's going to be more than two of us, we'll have to just let Natasha know so she can notice, do a notice that there would be a quorum. So, but we'll try and keep everybody abreast of that going forward.
Okay, thank you.
And with CSA, we have the same kind of parameters that Dana has with ACO. We either support, look for amendment, all those items that she had on there and is a very effective tool. And again, these two organizations, CSA and ACO, do have some influence with legislators down there and they do, they do meet with us and they have meetings with us to understand our position, so let's just keep up the good work.
For the election side of things, 110 bills total, 64 House, 39 Senate, seven HRA SCRs. The impact across our departments, 70 of them would affect the Elections Department, 23 early voting and 17 on voter registration. Some of the bills that we are supporting right now and have weighed in as such, for the county constables and the JPs, for them to be able to equal. They tried this previously, there was an omission in language, it didn't go where it needed to, so we've, we're trying to clean that up right now, just like the Board of Supervisors, myself can equal as candidates. They were not seen as a county elected official, they were seen as a judicial, so we are cleaning up that language. With 2391, it would be the amount of signatures that they would require to gain as a candidate. 2376 is getting county candidates in the citizens' clean election pamphlet. This is such an amazing resource for voters and most of the calls that we get are why aren't any of our county people running in this? So it would, it would add additional resources for voters, getting the information that they need for elections. 1011 and 2703 have been termed the Florida Voting Model. We are in support of that, most of the election officials and recorders are and actually was at the Capitol testifying in regards to that. Note of SB 1040, the recall timeline, because Penal County had a recall for Mammoth this last election, we learned some valuable lessons. We hadn't seen this in a very long time in our state and we realized the deadlines run right up against producing ballots. So the wonderful Garrett Glover of Penal County helped write some language and we got that and that one has come out of committee. Of course, nobody wants foreign money in our elections and this is another one we're supporting and then additionally with the write-in deadline.
Supervisor Miller, can I ask a question? Could you go back to the one about, and explain what do you mean by equal and then with the JPs and the constables? I mean, what does that entail? I'd like to know more about what that particular law is, where it's headed.
Sure.
Because, I mean, we were able to set the salaries, for instance, and I think that's, and I think everybody understands where I'm going with this, I just want to make sure that's not taking that ability for us to do that.
No, absolutely not.
Because we're actually monitoring the amount of work and effort that our constables actually do.
Chairman Miller, Mr. Goodman, Supervisor Goodman. No, the equal is a system that candidates have the ability to use, merit office something with the state, to be able to go in and obtain their signature petition signatures in an electronic system instead of just getting their paper petitions out there. Historically, justices and constables did not have that ability to do that. Actually, the clerk of Superior Court did not have the ability. When they ran the law, I think it was two sessions ago, now the clerk of Superior Court does, but we still were remiss in how it was written, so now it's back at the table so that, you know, our constables and justices would have that equal ability. For the signature petition gathering, where did I put my notes on that one? What they required, it would be like a 300 cap for how many signatures they need to get, instead of it being the .25 of a area, it's so, that's what it's all to do with the formulas for how many signatures that they need to obtain, making it again, on a more equal footing.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
I couldn't figure out how to go backwards, so I apologize. Other questions about election bills? No. So we're on to law enforcement. Obviously, this is not my forte and Sheriff Tople is not here, but these are some of the highlights. One that already passed out was 1010, the 10% pay increase. The American, or the Association of Sheriffs didn't have a position, but it did pass out of committee. 2171 is a law enforcement family scholarship fund. 2331 is you must show identification to law enforcement where requested. The 2602 is sex offender registration. It's about how they define the word guilty in statute, there need to be clarifications on that. 1060 is internal investigations. 1231 was a really great one. When we sat at the table discussing this from the ACO standpoint, you have some smaller rural counties in Arizona and then you have some like Penal County, Pima and Maricopa that have really great resources, so the ability for a constable to move across the state and obtain training from say Penal County, that's all it would allow. 1220, victims can have recordings and appropriation for crime victim notification fund. And these are all ones that have been supported through ACO. Transportation, Mr. Miller?
Oh boy. So, well, I don't even know if they've gone to a committee yet, to be honest with you. I suspect they'll get heard in, in committee and I'll have to give you an update from going forward. Moving over a $500 fine, I think that might die, but, and that's just, that's just experienced looking at stuff. So, but the overpass at Riggs, somehow, some way, we've got to draw the attention to ADOT and I think, and I think the tribe to really be effective on that. I don't think anything's going to happen there until they both want to cooperate. And it's sorely needed, I just don't know. The study continues with I-11, but I, I think the state's transportation systems probably have more current needs at this time. That's, in my opinion, is still kind of a futuristic path that will be brought forth someday, but that's what I can tell you on those. And just FYI, on transportation, I am the Chair of the Sun Corridor MPO this year, but I am no longer on the RTAC, the Rural Transportation Advocacy Group. I've been, I've been replaced, that doesn't sound right, but anyway, somebody else is representing Penal County, so I'll be phasing myself out of it, but I keep abreast of what's going on in Penal County for now. Thank you.
Others that would affect Penal County that are currently in, being supported. 2287 is for, the short title is Mobile Home Landlord Tenant and Protection. It's just with reporting complaints and then the ability for somebody who's applying for, to rent a mobile home to provide their own background or pay for their own background check. 2574, it requires disclosures and it's if you own a large parcel, how it is able to be broke down and they'll allow it if you own a parcel to break it down into no less than two acre lots. Gal Griffiths is sponsoring that, so we'll be waiting to see if that comes out. 2678 Indistinguishable AI, this is one for the awful people who do awful things to children, not being able to use AI to create the image of a minor child. Cross County Constable Training, again, we talked about that in the law enforcement slide. And Animal Bite Contact Information is if my dog bites you, you have the ability to require, I give you my information. That is that. Do we have any questions?
If I may, on 2574, I spoke with Representative Griffin on that, excuse me, and I really think she's looking in the right direction. They're trying to, trying to come up with a method where you can create some subdivided lots, but not have such amount of cost in the infrastructure that it does make it a little bit more affordable. It's kind of, it is really one of those kind of rural subdivision models they want to see and also, we hope that it will curtail wildcatting, which has always been somewhat of an issue. So I really want to monitor that one. I think that, that might be something, again, for those people that, that enjoy the rural lifestyle, that that could be a plus.
I would weigh in on that one, too, because some of the issues that were brought here today is a lot to do with some of the, these rural, small splits that have been made, so thank you.
Chairman, I just have a, just more of a statement. Soon as I heard the word 347 and Riggs Overpass, this affects the City of Maricopa greatly and I'm going to take every opportunity to promote this and make sure that everybody remembers. 347facts.com is very important. We have 75,000-plus people in the City of Maricopa who'd like to leave the city and get to their destination safe and also get home to their family safe. So I encourage, even out of my district, out of the City of Maricopa, we would be more than gracious for you to add some emails to encourage our state legislators who get this email, over 100 people get this from ADOT, the board members who probably, again, can't stand me for this, but it is so important to us that I want every opportunity I get to hear the word 347, I mentioned 347 and Riggs Road, and please, we could use your help, just the way other roads in the county need help, that I'm more than happy to support. Thank you.
Additionally, for members of the community who have questions about the bills, stances, especially anything to do with voter registration, early voting or the Elections Department, wanting to understand changes in language, what it means, how it would affect our departments, I absolutely would love for people to reach out directly. I can get in touch with them, explain where we're at with certain things, which ones are in committee, committee of the whole, where we're going with it and reasons maybe we don't support something and we can have those open dialogues and I would encourage anybody who has questions about this process and how we go forward this next month, to go ahead and reach out directly.
Steve?
Thank you, sir.
So I just want to say that CAG and NACOG and I think Sun Corridor had their legislative meeting down there with, not many legislators showed up, only five, but of course, in District Five, 24 is very important and they are trying to get some, clawback some of the money that the governor took away to get to the next stage. So since the PRTA is kind of on hiatus, we're at the mercy of the legislature and the governor to help get that built for now.
That's a transportation issue, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brings us to item number, number five, Purchasing Division Report.
Good morning Chairman Miller, members of the board. Just made morning, by the way. Angie Woods, I'm the Director of the Office of Budget and Finance and I have Purchasing Division Report for today, February 5th. In the report, we're requesting approval of two contract awards. One for RFP 250930 for private, private 5G network and as a correction, the documentation that was included, we need to correct in your...
In the motion?
In your motion, thank you. That the evaluation and award determination for legacy wireless services, they do hold the necessary licensing and was responsive to the RFP. I've communicated those, the change to the clerk's office. RFQ 252230 in-home detention alcohol monitoring. There are four contract amendments in this report to extend the exercise optional period for RFP 204126, RFP 204829, RFP 241729 and ROQ 243629. There are two purchases included in this report that are using PC1-350, which is our competition in practicable process for purchases over $100,000 for your approval. And then lastly, the report contains one purchase order between $100,000 and $250,000 that we're making you aware of, that we've used a cooperative agreement. Any questions?
Any questions? You have a motion?
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the Purchasing Division Report as presented and correcting the evaluation and award determination to reflect that legacy wireless services holds the necessary contractor license and is responsive to RFP 250930, private 5G network.
Do I have a second? Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay.
Thank you.
I just have it. Thank you. Brings us to item number six, the Consent Agenda. All items indicated with an asterisk will be held by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a board member, county manager, or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda is called. I do have item C pulled by Rich. We'll just go there. Any other board members have anything they want pulled? County manager? Public? Anybody from the public? Okay. I don't see none. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve consent items A through H minus C.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. I just have it. Item number C. Rich?
Yes, Chairman. I would just like to withdraw at this time. Item C from the consent agenda.
Okay, I have a motion to withdraw. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. I just have it. Thank you. Moving along. We're, brings us to the call to the public portion of our meeting. And as I said earlier, there will be a second call to the public, in a sense. This is the normal one. This is not about item one. So, this is open. We cannot engage with you. We can't answer your questions or anything on this. But we'll, we'll take it from here.
Hello again, Chair Miller. Supervisors, I'm Robin Davis, and I live in Hidden Valley. I'm a little bit more prepared this time. First, I want to thank you all for taking on the code enforcement document in such a quick manner. I know the last couple of weeks have been either hectic or overwhelming for you all. So, we appreciate your attention to this matter. Many from other districts, you know how social media, I know Jeff was on it, and some people, it got out of hand real fast. But so that there's, many from the other districts do not know our new supervisor, Rich Vitello. They believe that because he comes from the city of Maricopa on the City Council, that he doesn't know anything about the rural areas. I'm going to be the first to hold him accountable. He will hear from me very first. But he has, even before he was elected, he came to all our meetings, all our candidate forums, expressed an interest in what was going on out there and stayed informed at all times. So, as much as everybody got slammed on social media, they don't know him yet. So, I've got to throw my hat in his ring and that he will do a really fine job for the unincorporated area of his district. Our group from Thunderbird Farms in Hidden Valley have been coming to speak to you for about three years now. This time today was not just about Western Pinal County. It was about the whole county. And I think people's concerns about the supervisors were where they were steering us. Can you hear us now? I hope that the latest and overwhelming objection to the way the rural people of Pinal County are treated will make you pause and reassess the way things are going. Once we lose that rural way of life, we will lose the charm that is the heart of Pinal County. I would also like to take this opportunity, and I think this is all based on the social media, Jeff, and that Facebook group that where so much misinformation was going around. But I ask you, I'm going to take this opportunity to ask you all the supervisors to reconsider attending social meetings or social groups, and I don't want to get into the name of it, but where you are associated with law groups or developers that will eventually come before you to plead their cases. So, when you're on the outside, it's not that there's probably anything illegal, but the appearance of it looks inappropriate. So, reconsider some of those things. And I really thank you for all the abuse you've taken over the last two weeks. I know it's not easy. And so, maybe the next time we come before you, you'll have a better understanding of the rural community. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Arlen Trout from Gold Canyon. The Board is aware of the recent contempt ruling against Pinal County and land developers in the Trout versus Russell lawsuit. This is not new news. I came here 10 times to warn the Board and public. The Trout versus Russell ruling has everything to do with this desperate 337-page power grab. I believe Mr. Billingsley strategically released this infuriating plan on January 6 to get ahead of the January 13 contempt ruling against Pinal County. This scheme gives him vast powers of discretion. It was crafted to retroactively legitimize illegal land developments of past that were uncovered in the Trout versus Russell litigation. This ruling exposed a pattern of illegal practices that violate state and federal regulations and court orders. By granting Billingsley authority to reclassify these major changes as minor amendments, the Board gives him the power to bypass public hearings, restrict appeals, and fast-track development approvals without community input under the guise of administrative reform. I'm calling on our county attorney, Brad Miller, and each board member to explain why the county hired outside attorneys to protect Brent Billingsley and these land developers and cover up the scandal with public funds. I've been threatened and accused of being a liar. If that's true, call me out right now and here. But I know you won't, and your silence will say it all. Respectfully submitted, Arlen Trout.
Hi, I'm Kathy Trout from Gold Canyon. I live on Yawkey Lane. I've been here 40 years, and my family's been in Arizona for over 100 years. The Board, again, is aware of the threats and the harassments and the weaponization of the planning and zoning against our family, the assaults and the financial burden that you've subject our family to. We've lived here under constant threat from the sheriff and local land developers, and no one cared until you threatened the farms and the land developers and the ranchers of the area, which we knew would eventually come, that it wasn't going to just be the Trouts. It's going to be not from bullies, but people who've lived here for half a century, over 100 years, who've cared-taped for the land. And now, you are threatening not just the Trout family, but others. And so, now, they have showed up as well as the Trouts. So, again, it's not just us. We would like to know why you've covered up what was done to our family, why you hired an attorney to protect planning and zoning who wasn't even taking care of the ordinances, was not making the land developer responsible for not doing things properly. And instead, you've protected them and you've protected planning and zoning and the land developers over people that have been on that hill over 50 years. I'm calling out your Board to explain why you hire outside attorneys for situations instead of taking care of the citizens of the county. And Arlen's tried to warn you about what was happening, about the damage to our family. And in turn, you threatened him and called him a liar. And not once did you ever defend or protect the Trout family. And now that you've got not just us, but thousands of others, perhaps you'll take the time to listen. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mary Eileen Flanagan, and I'm from Hidden Valley, which is south of the town of Maricopa. Thank you first for discarding the update draft of Pinal County zoning ordinances. Please form a citizens' board to draft the new ordinances, especially since there are some fundamental issues with the 2012 version and even earlier. For example, if my nephew had wanted to park his car at my house while serving in Iraq, he could not have done so. That's pretty crazy. And that is only one of many such unintended consequences of our existing ordinances. I've run two boarding stables on 10 acres, but both only used about five of those acres to fully house over 30 horses, a full-sized arena and other amenities. Requiring 20 acres, which the new ordinances would have done, shows a complete disconnect with what's necessary. Also, please find a law firm that is local and rural to advise us going forward. We need someone who understands our local, rural, and urban values. This is an unprecedented opportunity to fully revise and consider input from constituents who understand rules are necessary, but they should reflect the realities of the community. Please don't waste this unique opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amen, generally, where you live? My name's Jeannie Stockton, and I live at 29709 North Gecko Trail in Sandtan Valley, beautiful part of Pinal County. Happy birthday to Mishka. Thank you, Chairman Miller, for letting me speak today. And Board of Supervisors, thank you for listening. I just am coming here. I had a little tune-up of my heart. So, I've been kind of out of commission for a few months. But I'm good now. If anybody wants to do a marathon, let me know. The Board of Supervisors should remember that they represent the entire population of Pinal County. Each of you should address the concerns of all residents based on the merit of the topic at hand. This isn't just talking about the rural communities. This is talking about developments in the urbanized areas. When voting on a particular item that affects a specific concern or zoning change, the vote should be based on, regardless, it should be based regardless of your community of interest. We don't want to hear, well in Maricopa, well in Casagrande, well in Apache Junction, we want you to divorce all of your thoughts of your ties and only make your vote based on the merits of the topic at hand. Do the people of Pinal County know that the building plans submitted to rezone a property are only concepts? Once that piece of property is rezoned, the developer can build whatever they want as long as it falls within the restrictions of that particular zoning. If I come in and say I'm going to build two-story condominiums, and then I decide, well, I don't want to do that now that it's zone multi-residential, I can build three-story apartments. Do the people in the county really know there's a little bit of, you know, not intentional, but there's a little bit of deception going on there? So, I'd also like to point out, I requested to sit down and have a discussion with the Planning and Zoning Committee. Supervisor Goodman directed Leo Lu to set that meeting up. I wanted to have an understanding of how planning and zoning operated. I wanted to understand how they handled the documents. That request was made in September, and the meeting still hasn't been held. I'm not here to criticize. I'm here to understand. And I have a very vast background, and I could maybe help you improve some of the, the things that are going on, such as we need a centralized automated way for all of these letters in opposition to be recorded. I have more to say, but thank you for your time.
Chairman Miller, members of the Board, thank you for the vote earlier. People need to remember that the zoning code only applies to areas in unincorporated counties. It doesn't apply to Florence, Cassagrande, Maricopa. People need to get that off their mind. This is unincorporated county. The Comprehensive Plan also states that the objective is to maintain rural character. So, a couple of things. That means that the zoning available in the code for unincorporated county needs to be limited to those size and types of parcels that are suited for rural lifestyle. That means they don't have things in there that give you four, or five, or eight to an acre or 200-unit, you know, apartment dwellings. Because that's not what rural lifestyle is. So, there needs to be some way to lock out development that's okay for the city of Maricopa and from what is appropriate for unincorporated rural county. So, the first thing would be, number one, be very careful in what zonings are allowed under the, under the new code. The second thing is to make sure we don't go too far afield with that. And that can be done by changing how you define a pad or what's restrictions on a pad, planned area development. Dwelling unit density implied area development shall not exceed that of the underlying county zoning. That's an easy change. It starts tying some hands up. So, we don't have four and five and eight to an acre. The other issue is the HOA is in the weed Nazis that we get in some of these developments. That's not fair to homeowners. And the same thing happens in minor land divisions. So, those hands need to be tied. So, in the code, we need to say, "Covenants, conditions, and restrictions shall be limited to common area maintenance and shall not impose restrictions on property or its use outside the common area." That kills the weed Nazis. That kills people telling me when they did a minor land division, you can have one horse per acre. Those are things that should not be in a rural county. One of the other things we have is we have the solar field battery facility ISO down south. For those who don't know that, when those battery facilities catch fire, you can't put them out. They will burn for a week, and you'll be spewing toxic gases all over the place. I came out of an industry that dealt with stuff like that. You don't want that. In 10 years, when the field is done and they will be abandoned, that is not anything you want to have in a rural area. So, the other thing I suggest for the code, very simply, is grid-scale solar and wind production of electricity and grid-scale battery storage of electrical energy is prohibited. If someone else wants it into the city, that's fine. One thing you guys really need to do is we need to figure out how we got here with the draft. Something truly, really went badly sideways. Staff didn't understand the requirements on the Comprehensive Plan. We got the wrong consultants. Whatever happened, guys, you need to dig into it and understand so we're not back here again in six months. And the public is mad, and we're furious, and you're going, oh, my gosh, what had happened this time? We don't want to get there.
Thank you.
Roberto Ravelas, resident of Gold Canyon. Mr. Chairman and members, I speak again in the spirit of truth, transparency, and accountability. We're living in a bizarre time and place where words and actions have lost their meaning, where respect for the rule of law depends on political affiliation and an unquenchable thirst for power. I want to clarify that I clearly align myself with the speakers who have been to this call to the public in support of their views being reflected in zoning code. It's their right to exercise their freedom of speech in defense of the lifestyle of their choice. And I applaud members of the Board, who respectfully are trying to reflect the expressed will of your constituents. In that same spirit, I urge my fellow Americans, regardless of politics, to speak out now as our nation witnesses an ongoing attempt at dismantling our constit- as our nation witnesses an ongoing attempt at dismantling our constitutional republic's institutions of self-governance, destroying trust in self-governance and replacing it with blind obedience to autocratic decrees dressed up as executive orders. We're witnessing a truly grotesque and surreal history unfolding before our eyes with, I say this as respectfully as I can, with a convicted criminal sitting in the White House, granting pardons to other convicts who violently attacked law officers defending our nation's capital, sitting behind a presidential desk, signing executive orders beyond his constitutional authority. This nightmare should wake us all up. As for myself, I refuse to participate in the further destruction of our American dream and will continue to resist during call to the public and other venues. I urge fellow Americans to join the resistance, continue to respect the rule of law, stand up for the democratic principles that have made our nation the beacon of light for all who seek freedom from authoritarian rule, neither in Pinell County and throughout the nation. Do not submit to self-serving dealmakers who are desperately seeking to replace our constitutional republic with governance by a supreme autocratic ruling class. As Member Goodman said, stay engaged. Yes, I intend to stay engaged and resist. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I have no other cards. Does anybody else like to speak? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move to item eight.
Mr. Chair.
I submitted a card that I...
You did? Go ahead. I don't think I missed any. Steve, can I just give direction to the staff on the item? Just one second. No, whenever she's done. Okay. I'm sorry, give your name and generally where you live.
Yeah, my name is Annabelle Patterson. I live in the Cactus Forest area, and I'm glad that you guys decided to scrap the new building and zoning proposal. In the perfect world of cookie cutter code and compliance, we all have the same sized property with the same amount of boundaries and they will all be nicely square. But that's not what happens right now. Everybody has a different sized property with different sized boundaries, and they might be rectangular, triangular, semi-square, whatever you want to call it, but every time you get, you get into a situation where you tell somebody that they need to have something X amount of feet away from the property line, you run into problems because not all the properties are the same shape and they have the same amount of acreage. So for example, in the proposal, it said that you had to have a compost pile 500 feet away from a well. Well, my next-door neighbors who just bought their property, they have one well that is shared by four properties, an acre and a quarter, and the well is right in where the four corners of the properties meet together. If they were to have a compost pile, they couldn't. It will be prohibited because they're, it's impossible for them to have it 500 feet away from the well. And the same thing happens if it was to be 50 feet away from a property line, or if the chicken coop needs to be 20 feet away from the property line, you run into all kinds of problems. So we can't exert cookie cutter solutions to noncookie cutter sized properties, and I think that that's when common sense needs to come into effect, because you need to somehow grandfather a lot of us into our property so you don't run into 10 million complaints in the next 100 years, because none of us will be compliant, and the new people moving in will be just trying to rat you eat into the, you know, the county and say, well, you can't have chickens here, you can't have goats here. I primarily have small ruminants. You can't compare a sheep to a horse, or a goat to a cow, they're not in the same category. And that's one of the mistakes that was in the definitions part. So for you to say that I can only have one horse and two sheep, it's, you know, it's just kind of ridiculous. But I'm just saying, do not apply cookie cutter solutions to noncookie cutter properties, and you have tons of those noncookie, noncookie cutter types of properties in Pinell County. So, I mean, don't, don't make us all be criminals because you're adopted, you're going to adopt something new without grandfathering what's already existing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, what is it?
I just want to give some direction on one of the questions.
Okay. I'll, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Leo, if, if you could see to it that somebody from our community developed, I see, I don't know why my mind went, no, but I was thinking of Jeannie. If he can meet with her and just kind of go over some of the questions, or set a time up that they can do that, that'd be great. Thanks. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Sure. All right. Okay, moving on to item eight. This will have a public hearing component, and we'll hear eight and nine discussion together. So presenter, the code R.
It's good afternoon, Chairman, Vice Chair, Board Members. Sangita Deuker, Senior Planner with Planning Division, presenting case Nirvana Center. The case entails two applications. First is the rezone, and the second is a special use permit for the same area. As stated, the first part is the rezone from CB2, which is general business zone, to C3, commercial zoning district, and a special use permit requesting to operate a marijuana dispensary within that C3 zoning district for two suits. The size of the property is 3.3 acres, and location is south along West Papago Road, east of North White Road in Maricopa, in the unincorporated Pinell County. Applicant owner, Michelle Green and Larry from Lazarus-Silvan and Randel-Cottle Papago Properties LLC. This is the county map showing the location of this proposal. You can see that it's marked in the Maricopa Western Pinell County Central, south of the incorporated Maricopa City. The vicinity map, again showing the location in red. One can see that the properties around south are SR zoning, there's CR3, CR2 zoning to the north, and it is along the Papago Road, and I'm going to zoom into the aerial map showing the development around, it's already an existing commercial building. One can see the grain and textures, a large properties, 3.3 acres, and this is within the CB2 zone. Again, surrounding zoning, further zooming into the surrounding zoning, showing the C3 zoning to the north, the south is SR Suburban Ranch, and this property that is hatched is part of the CB2 zoning. This is the, basically the site plan and an existing commercial center which is already there. The site features basically consists of a developed site with access from the north side, the Papago Road, the commercial structure which was permitted in 1988. There are existing 64 parking spots with ADA parking existing. There's an existing trash enclosure, there's partial fencing around the property, and suits for A and for B have been further marked with a little darker yellow hatched in, you know, sorry, outlined by dotted line in red. That would be housing the Nirvana dispensary. You can see that the surroundings, which is Dollar General to the right side of this, and the Farmers Convenience, Farmers Convenience Store to the west of this existing property. Some photos to the north, to the south looking into the property, to the east, and this is along Papago, and to the west. Some items for both consideration, the parcel was zoned CB2 in 1974 under a zoning case PZ 43074, and the commercial building was permitted in 1988. Marijuana dispensaries were interpreted as allowed uses in the CB2 zone with a special use permit. Based off of that, there were two special use permits in the same place that were allowed to operate under the Ponderosa Leaf Dispensary under SUP 001-15, which expired in 2017, and an SUP 011-16 that expired in 2019. Ponderosa Leaf Dispensary moved to a new location, leaving the local people, you know, no access to the dispensary services that were serving the area. The code update in 2012 allowed medical marijuana only in C3 zoning with special use permit leaving the current site incompatible for the use under CB2 zoning.
Mr. Chair.
Sure, go ahead.
Sangita, did I hear you say that there's been one, or there is one nearby?
No.
A dispensary? There's not?
There is none.
Okay.
In the near vicinity, so that...
There was never one before?
No.
Okay. Whoa, whoa, whoa.
One before, on this space, on this, there were two SUPs in the same, for A and for B suits.
There was dispensaries?
Yes. There were these two dispensaries that were, and that were allowed, the SUPs that have been stated.
On the same location, or, I just, for some clarification?
I don't want discussion from the audience, I need...
What I'm hearing is they were there and they left.
That's correct.
Is that, okay, that's, thank you. I'm sorry.
I am sorry for the...
That helps me out.
The confusion.
That's me. That's all on me. I get confused.
I'm sorry again. So the applicant is requesting to rezone to C3 to reinstate the use for the medical marijuana dispensary per code requirement. The applicant has also applied a companion application for a special use permit concurrently to allow this new Nirvana Center in the same location as the prior dispensary. We have received no letters of opposition and, just moving forward, the planning and zoning recommended approval 8 to 0 voting, and PZ 02224 was approved with 13 stipulations, and the SUP 099-24 was approved with 15 stipulations. I'm open for questions.
Mr. Chair.
Any other questions?
Quick question. So Ms. Deuker, just to wrap my head around a little bit, this is for medical marijuana dispensation, not for recreational?
This is a medical marijuana...
Medical, okay, because it was before, and now we're just changing the name and putting a new SUP in, but it's for medical. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Same location, right?
Yes.
Okay.
We also have a presentation from the applicant, and I'm open for questions at this time for myself, however, they do have a presentation.
Any, any questions for her?
Not yet.
Okay. The applicant would like to do a presentation?
Which one? How do I? Press that. Okay, thank you. I was going to say, good morning, good afternoon. For the record, my name is Larry Lazarus of Lazarus and Silvan, and we represent Nirvana Center dispensaries in this case. This is an application to rezone the property, rezone this commercial center to obtain the use permit to allow the marijuana dispensary at the same location as the Ponderosa Leaf Dispensary that was there before. Nirvana, my client, is a multi-state cannabis company. They have nine dispensaries in Arizona, 14 in the state of Michigan, one in Maryland, and one in New Mexico. They've been involved in the business since 2011. With me today are Chuck Ready, the owner of the property, also Giovanni Dolan, who's General Counsel for Nirvana Centers, and Michelle Green, my Senior Land Use Planner. The property, there we go, the property is located at 49237 West Papago Road. This slide shows the location of the property in context. It is located on the south side of Papago Road, between White and Salmonson Roads, the Dollar General store is to the east, the Farmer's Restaurant and Convenience Store is to the west, there's residential property on the south with farming to the north. We originally filed our application, for pre-application, excuse me, for the special use permit of the dispensary in November of 2023. We held a neighborhood meeting at the dispens, area of the dispensary in February of 2024. We had five attendees, all were in support of the application. When we filed for the formal application, however, we found that there was an issue with the prior interpretation of the ordinance, and that we were required to rezone the property from CB2 to C3, even though there had been two prior permits for dispensaries in 2015, 2017. I hope that makes that more clear. The county indicated that although they had previously approved two use permits for the dispensary, for our CB2 zoning, they could no longer do that because of the change of the zoning. Medical marijuana dispensaries became legal in 2011, right around the time the county was updating its entire zoning ordinance. When the county updated the ordinance, they created a whole new set of zoning categories, including C3, which would allow dispensaries. We were told that the intent was to have dispensaries also in CB2, but they did not go back and change the requirements of CB2. So therefore, we had to go back and do this rezoning as well. Staff initially interpreted the zoning of marijuana dispensaries would be in CB2, and we were not allowed to do that, even though technically, the ordinance had changed. With that understanding, let me go to the specific case. So, this slide shows the zoning surrounding property. The light purple color is commercially zoned property, starting at the Dollar General store immediately to the east of our property, heading along Papago Road. The property in blue is zoned suburban ranch, which allows agriculture and single-family residential. The property to the north is CR2, which allows single-family residential and some agricultural uses. This next slide shows you the site plan. Actually, we are not proposing any change to the site as it exists today. You can see the commercial building here with the entrance of Papago Road and the parking along the front of the building. We are only changing the internal use of the building. There are 64 parking spaces on the property, the dispensary will only be required to use six of those spaces. The dispensary is planned in the same location as the previous dispensary, with a slightly different configuration inside the building because a portion of the space that had been previously used for a reptile store will be increased slightly. We have no opposition to the use permit or rezoning since our first neighborhood meeting in 2024 in February. We've had five attendees in support. They were looking forward to replacement of the Ponderosa Leaf, prior dispensary. The second neighborhood meeting for the rezoning was held in September 11th of 2024, also five attendees, different attendees, by the way, and all five who attended the meeting also indicated support. The planning commission heard and unanimously approved this case, actually seven to zero. One of the members refused themselves. No one here is in opposition that we're aware of that has been submitted, submitted any information to the county.
So, you have a question? Yeah, I do. You know, I've been writing down some of the, some questions and, and I apologize, I didn't cut you off and clarify. Yeah, go ahead and finish.
Couple other items.
Go ahead and finish.
I'll be quickly.
Go ahead, I'm good.
Quick. The dispensaries themselves are very clean, they're attractive retail outlets, they resemble jewelry stores, as you can see. The retail stores themselves do not emit odor, because of, all the products are grown and packaged elsewhere and brought to the property. There will be no marijuana grown in this location, only at, this will only be a dispensary. Cannabis has a community benefit. It's used as treatment for pain, anxiety, PTSD, and cancer side effects. So there is a benefit to the community to have these things. As far as security goes, this, this use provides more security than any other retail use, for example, liquor stores, or grocery stores, or drugstores, and things of that, that nature. There's close collaboration with the law enforcement, there's strict adherence to appropriate age requirements. Supervisor Metello, there are no Utes that can go into this site. From an exterior... From an exterior standpoint, the lighting and the loitering prevention will occur. State-of-the-art video surveillance occurs 24/7. There will be no additional traffic, actually traffic from restaurants and from other types of uses that could occur here without any rezoning. For example, create almost 300 to 600 trips per day more than a dispensary does. So with that, I will answer any questions that you might have. Thank you for giving me a little extra time.
Okay, thank you. You know, I probably ought to get clarification on what he was making reference to when you can't use there. But, but...
Go ahead, ask your questions.
Yeah, I have several. And so what you're, what I'm hearing is that there was a dispensary there before because of some rezoning that we did to bring it up to par. We changed the ordinance, bring it up to par with state, right?
Oh, you just changed the ordinance, not to bring it up to state, but you just had a change.
Was this facility already gone when we did that? Or did it go because of those changes?
Actually, those two facilities were actually approved inappropriately, I should say.
How long ago?
2017.
16 and 17.
Okay, all right. So that gives a reference.
So when we went back, they said we had to follow the ordinance, the interpretation was wrong last time.
So when did they go out of business? The last one?
2007, 2019.
They just moved.
They moved their license.
They didn't move. The old one.
They relocated.
They relocated. Okay, and how far apart are they?
Apart? I'm sorry.
The two, the two facilities?
Oh, it's nowhere near this site.
Okay, all right.
Nowhere near this site.
Chairman, just to let you know, they moved, I believe to you, the Surpriser Glendale back then, just due to bigger volume of people that were up in that area.
And I remember, if I remember right, when we were going through the ordinance change, there was a distance that was going to be required between the facilities to do that. I mean, you know, we'll go ahead though.
The ordinance does have a distance requirement and we are nowhere near that.
Okay, that's all, that's all I need clarification for me personally. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions this time?
Thank you very much.
Okay. So I'm going to open the public hearing on both of these items, eight and nine. Anybody from the public want to speak on either eight or nine at this time? Somebody? Your name and generally where you live?
Okay, my name is Robin Davis. I live in Hidden Valley, about seven miles from this, just as a good show of faith and to show you guys, we're not always against anything. I have no objections to this. It's in a great area, not really near anything, and there was a dispensary there before and from the residents that I've talked to in general and in our committee, we really have no objections. Like again, it's a good show of faith. We're not against everything. Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the audience that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. So what's the pleasure on item eight?
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move, we approve item eight as presented with the 13 stipulations.
A motion and a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay.
Nay.
Okay. One nay. Item number nine. Board's pleasure?
Yeah, Chairman, I look to, I will approve item nine as read with 15 stipulations.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay.
Nay.
One nay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have another page here. Okay, item number 10, we'll have a public hearing component, but we'll have a presentation by Celeste Garza.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. Item 10 is an abandonment of a portion of Sun Road. This is located in the northeastern Apache Junction area in section 13. The Lamb family would like to do a garage expansion on their property, so they want to meet setbacks, so this abandonment is necessary for that building permit. Sun Road is located east of Mountain View and south of Pioneer. The county doesn't currently maintain a roadway on this alignment. It does, it has been abandoned to the north of Rahide. Most of the property owners have access off either Val Vista or Rahide Street. Legal access wouldn't be an issue for this abandoned piece. This is a photo.
Did you say would or wouldn't?
Wouldn't.
Would not, okay.
Yes, would not. Sorry about that.
Make sure I heard that right.
And this is a photo looking from Rahide Street to the south of the abandoned, this proposed abandonment. I am happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Anyone have any questions on this item? Want to open up the public hearing at this time? Anybody like to speak to this item in the public hearing? Seeing none? I'll close the public hearing. Board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I move, we approve item 10 as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it. Thank you very much. Moves us to item number 11. This has a public hearing component as well, but we have a presentation by Celeste Garza.
Item 11 is also located in the northeastern Apache Junction area. The Buckskin Road alignment, this would be the east 33 feet between east of Geronimo and north of Superstition Boulevard. The portion that we're looking to abandon is the east 33 feet that is south of Mockingbird Street. Legal access, most of the property owners use the Geronimo alignment for access. All the utilities have agreed to this abandonment as well. And this is a photo looking from Buckskin South from Mockingbird Street. Oh, there we go.
Drive through there.
Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Celeste? This has a public hearing component as well. It's all open to public hearing. Anybody in the audience want to speak to this? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion, then we approve item number 11 as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it. Thank you. Bring us to item number 12. Discussion approval disapproval of the recommendation to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control Application. Natasha?
Yes, Chairman and Board Members. To ensure compliance with the notice of posting of at least 20 days, the recommended motion is to continue this item to the February 19th agenda.
So I have recommendation to continue this item. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we continue item 19 to February 19th, 2025, board meeting.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Two seconds. Give it to him. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Take one, I don't care, Natasha, just take one.
Just try to share the love, that's all.
Anyone oppose, say nay. Eyes have it. Okay, item number 13. Mr. Keller.
This is discussion approval disapproval, renewal, revision, or termination of an MOU with the recorder, I believe.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you recall, back two years ago now, you ceded your responsibility for elections to the recorder's office to manage those elections for you. As part of that agreement that was entered into every February, at the first meeting in February, we are to bring forward to you whether you want to continue that arrangement. In discussing with the recorder's office, I don't want to necessarily speak for her, so I'll ask Ms. Lewis to come up and see if she has any changes she'd like to recommend to it. We are under the impression that county management and recorder's office do not see any need to change anything at this point in time, but seeing there's always late-breaking things that may have changed overnight based on legislation, I'd like to have her repeat.
Chairman Miller, members of the board, Dina Lewis, your county recorder, and the person on the MOU, I'm still good with this if you are. I did bring on an assistant though.
Okay. Okay. Any questions for either Chris or Diana?
Where are we with the status of election director? Is there, we're fine where we are with how the structure's set up? I mean, that was previous, that was a big issue with...
Chairman Miller, members of the board, at this time, I would say that with the reorganization of the department and creating of a succession plan, I believe that we are able to successfully operate that department at this time.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions?
No.
Hearing, seeing none? Board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the continuation of the MOU executed September 6, 2023, between the Board of Supervisors and Penile County Recorder.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it. Thank you.
Chairman?
We'll continue with our agreement. Item number 14, an executive session. Do I have a motion to go in exec session?
Mr. Chair, I move, we recess the regular Board of Supervisors meeting and convene executive session.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a, a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it. Thank you. We're going into exec session and after that you can, if you want to hang around and watch us gavel the meeting over.
Session and reconvene the regular Board of Supervisors meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. This meeting is adjourned.
Where'd Leo go?